Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order with the clerk call the roll to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan, Councilmember Tao, Mayor Pretem Talamontes, Councilmember Valenzuela, Vice Mayor Maple, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Vang, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here. Vice Mayor Maple, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge? Thank you.
Please stand if you are able. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Putun Min Toop peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of an acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Remain standing, salute, and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. A very good evening to everyone, my colleagues, the city staff, and everyone here in the audience, and those that are watching from elsewhere. We have a big night tonight. And that big night starts with my honor to recognize the Thousand Strong program students. Many were here today. And let me just give a very brief introduction here. Digress just a little. When I was in the legislature way back in the day, I tried to champion the idea that we need to change our public education system, that it's too much of you either go to college or there's not much else for you in society these days. And while going to university is a good and great thing, and everyone deserves the opportunity to do so, that beginning in middle school and high school, we ought to begin establishing career pathways for young people, connecting curriculum to the real jobs that are out there, both that require a university degree and those that do not. And that every high school student ought to have a year-round paid work experience. And in the legislature, I authored the Career Pathways Trust legislation, $500 million for career pathways throughout California, including some in Sacramento. Then I got here. I said, well, what can I do now? I can't write the law anymore. So we launched Thousand Strong. And the idea was, and like many of my things, a little audacious, sometimes high expectations, you know? I said, if we could get 1,000 young people a year in year-round paid work experiences, we could help transform Sacramento education. So after eight years, I am proud to say that we had 950 Sacramento's participate in exactly what it is we proposed: year-round paid work experiences, hundreds of hours of payment, and 40 hours of training, and a lot. And one of the great challenges, of course, with this concept in American culture, especially around education, is that the employer community is not always connected with public education. In fact, there's a big distance. In Europe, it's very different, by the way. But here, there's this disconnect. So to get 950 young people connected with business and public agencies and nonprofits to have this experience, I hope, is a model that is going to continue and that is elevated so that we can get to that point where every young person has that experience. And so there are so many people and organizations. The Metro Chamber Foundation, which led the employer recruitment and payroll management, they did all the back office stuff for eight years. And I'm really grateful to the Chamber and the Chamber Foundation for doing that. The Bridge Network, who is providing job readiness training and career coaching for our interns. The Center for Land-Based Learning, who connects young people with hands-on agricultural work experience. Thank you. The North State BIA Foundation, one of our employer partners who's been creating opportunities for young people to work in the growing construction industry. This is not the end of Thousand Strong. As I cede this seat here, Thousand Strong will be shifted to the Office of Economic Development to be run alongside the current Youth Service Corps because it's part of our economic development strategy. And so we have, and I want to thank Nicole Quay Nelson of my staff here, and those who preceded her, Erica Kishiri, Andrew Keo, and others, and the city's economic development team as well, who have taken this new idea and actually made something good and great of it, even if it wasn't 1,000 people a year. We got to 950, which, you know, pretty good for, pretty good for a new idea. So I would like to present this resolution to all of the, all of the good people who helped make this a reality, and to come on up and take your bow and have a couple of the students say a few words about what this experience has meant to them, or any of the other adult leaders of the program. Come on up. It's your time. We'll give you 45 seconds. It's all good, you know? Just kidding. You take a little bit of time. It's good. Nicole?
Awesome. Thank you, everyone. Perfect. Thank you, David. And then Ashlyn? Perfect. Go ahead, and then we'll have Ashlyn.
Is it this one or that one? I'm not so sure. Okay. Hello, my name is Zaden Bush. I'm 17 years old, and I am placed at the Nutomas Library. This program, it's done a lot for me. Well, personally, my mom put me in this program, so I didn't really know what it was to come in at first, but thank you to the, some of the amazing people behind me, Peggy and Deshaun right there, and Yosio in the back. They've just really helped it, make it super easy for people to kind of be welcomed into it and just, and really just like show what a work experience really is, because that's very important. Because like Mr. Steinberg was saying, not everyone wants to go to college, and sometimes people want to take alternate routes to, you know, just not go to college. But no, I just want to thank this program. This program has done a lot for me. It's just made it so easier to gain a work experience, and working at a library, I most likely want to go and obtain that job in college as well, hopefully. But no, that's all I had to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sophia Pacheco. I'm a senior at St. Francis High School, and this is my second year working at Thousand Strong. And I'm looking to pursue a career in the medical field. So being able to do this internship and be placed at Wellspice Health has really just convinced me this is the career that I'm meant to take. And Thousand Strong has been a wonderful opportunity. I've learned so many things. I've met so many new people. And I've seen a lot of people grow from where they were at the beginning and have become more confident in their future career path now. And I just feel like this has been a great progression for what I want to do and help people in the future. And I thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to do this.
I love it. Thank you. By the way, this has been in partnership with all of the school districts within the city, so they've been really essential partners with all of this. And just adding up the number of hours, 90,500 hours of work, earning over $1.2 million of wages. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for taking the time today to honor the Thousand Strong internship. My name is Ashley Ying, and I'm a senior attending Luther Burbank High School. I am a second-year intern and have been in the program for one and a half years. I currently work in my high school's urban garden with 11 of my internship coworkers who also attend my high school. Being in the Thousand Strong program has helped me mature and grow as a person. It has been powerful to hear about my coworkers' dreams and the stories of guest speakers we've had in the internship, and that has motivated me to pursue my own career dreams. Some things that I have learned by being in this program are communication skills. I've learned to better understand others and how to manage conflict. I have also improved on leadership skills and public speaking. It has helped me with discipline and maturity. I've also learned a lot of agriculture skills like sustainable farming, food systems, using differentiationing certain tools from other tools, plant identification, and plant health. This internship has not only impacted me, but everybody else that I have worked with. Through my agriculture internship, I am able to work with 11 other students from my high school on a weekly basis. As interns, we all work together to take care of the garden and create a community together. It has helped everybody to become more responsible and learn communication skills. I believe we have all learned each of our own unique skills from this program. We can not only use these in future careers, but also in all of our everyday lives. I am grateful to have found this program and become a part of it. I hope that in the future, when new students join, they too will enjoy it as much as I did.
Do we have any, anyone, any other young people want to speak? I know there were several others signed up. I just want to make sure nobody is shorted here. We'll go quick. We just, we have a long agenda tonight. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lily Scharf. I'm currently 17 years old, and I was placed at the Front Street Animal Shelter. I just want to highlight the extremely positive experience I've had at the Front Street Animal Shelter. I'm placed with my amazing fellow interns and coworkers, Nalia, Andrea, Hasmeen, and Joy. And being able to work with them has facilitated an extremely positive work environment for me. I'm very glad that I had the opportunity to join Thousand Strong and meet these amazing people with similar backgrounds who grew up in the same Sacramento region as me. Thank you.
There were two other young people I know. Is that, did you want to speak? Who were supposed to speak? There were two others? All right. Hey, let's present the resolution. I just, with pride but also with gratitude to everyone who has helped make this experiment a real success. And may it continue, and may we give every young person those pathways and change curriculum to make them relevant to the pathways as well. School can be different. Go to Switzerland or Germany and see what they do. It's actually pretty, pretty amazing. Thank you. Let's go. Who wants to come on up? I'm going to, I'm going to present these resolutions.
Yeah, come on.
Okay, everyone. Everyone, if you could do short in the front, tall in the back, we would greatly appreciate that. That would help photos.
I mean, I'm, I'm short.
I mean, hey, you're getting back. I can still take over here. We're going to have to make a squeeze. If everyone can squeeze closer and walk a little forward. So Mayor and Vice Mayor, Mayor and Vice Mayor, can I have you take a couple steps forward so we can fit everyone behind you?
Yeah, there we go.
Everyone else, if you could cut in a little bit. I know it's very hard, and y'all want to be close together. Pretend that you like each other, please. Awesome. Thank you so much. Everyone up here, everyone smile. Okay, now a funny one.
Wow. That was awesome.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. All right, I got Pierre in the background.
Thank you, brother. I appreciate that. I'll let have your noise on you. Thank you, thank you.
Hey, Mayor, can I just say a few words real quick?
Yeah, hold on, you guys. Don't leave yet. Don't leave yet. My Vang has some nice things to say.
About you, Mayor. I just have some nice things to say about you.
No, then please, take whatever time you need.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I should have hit the, I should have hit the button cue up pretty quick, but I didn't. Really just wanted to take this time. Mayor, thank you so much for bringing this reso, but I feel like we should have brought this reso forward and not you. Really want to say thank you for your leadership, for launching this program, Thousand Strong. 950, I mean, you round that up, that's 1,000, but that is amazing, and we shall all give you a round of applause for your initiative. And then I know that you also named out several organizations that are critical partners in ensuring that this initiative remains strong, no pun intended, strong. But I want to give a shout out in particular to our students at Luther Burbank, and Mary Kimball, and Todd from Burbank, as well our ag teacher there. You know, this program is so important because, as you heard from one of the students, obviously, I went to a four-year college, right? Nothing against folks who are going to college. I think if that's a thing for you, that's great. But it's so important to make sure that we have different pathways for our students and really thinking about making sure that we're prepping our young people for all the jobs in this region. And I think about the wealth and the assets and the capital that we have in this region, the Sacramento region, especially ag, and thinking about the many positions that won't, that will be available, but the youth that won't be, won't have the skill set for that, that gap. And so just really want to thank all of the partners from Center for Land-Based Learning to BIA, to so many partners who are really working closely with us to make sure that we're training our youth and getting them prepared for, for jobs. So I just really want to say thank you, Mayor, for your leadership, and also want to say it's really great to hear that this initiative is going to go under our economic development. I think it's really important that we continue this, and congratulations to you, Mayor.
I get the gavel. So there was one young woman that didn't get to speak who wanted to speak. Where is she? In the front row, UCSB. Come on. Come on. Wait. It's worth a minute or two, or whatever. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Nalia Frazier. I'm 17, and I'm a senior at John F. Kennedy Middle, High School. I had the honor of being placed at the Front Street Animal Shelter. Now, this is not my first job, but it feels like it is. Working at the shelter has opened my mind to a whole new world and a new perspective of animals. Here I have learned what goes on behind the scenes of how a shelter operates and how many people it really takes to keep the place running. I have learned to expand my communication skills in improving in database systems. I also had the opportunity to meet some amazing coworkers in the process. We have grown closer over the months, and I truly appreciate them. I have decided to choose this site to keep, to see if this was the right career path for me, since I love animals. While I won't be pursuing this career in my future, I would love to volunteer after my internship is over.
Glad you came up. Thank you, all of you, all you young adults, right? We expect to see you up here someday and leading our community in so many different ways, and I hope this was a good foundation to help you think about your dreams and go after them. Thank you all. And stay for the meeting, because we've got some exciting stuff here. For those of you who are here on all the tourism issues, which I know we're all excited about, I think it's going to be about 15 minutes, if I'm, 15 to 20 minutes, because I think we'll get through some of the other items relatively quickly. You never know, but that's what I think. So let's start with the consent calendar. Yes? Oh, God, I'm sorry. Councilmember Valenzuela did have an off-agenda item which she talked to me about. I think it's totally appropriate. So the discretion of the chair, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for giving space at the beginning of today's meeting to acknowledge Transgender Day of Remembrance, which is tomorrow, November 20th, 2024. Transgender Day of Remembrance is a time to honor the lives of transgender people lost to violence, hatred, and despair. And I don't have a resolution or celebratory speaker or group photo tonight, instead I do have some somber facts. Because while Sacramento has made great strides in becoming a trans-affirming city, including passing a resolution just a few months ago declaring Sacramento a sanctuary city for transgender people, federal attacks are looming, and we must be prepared to do more. 2024 has seen a sharp global increase in violence against trans people, with nearly one-third of those murdered being under the age of 25. Over 200 million was spent in the last election cycle on anti-trans messaging, with over 100 candidates running on anti-trans platforms. The day after the election, The Trevor Project reports that they saw a staggering 700% surge in crisis calls. And this is not an abstract national issue. These are our neighbors, our kids in our schools, our coworkers, and our friends. So I'll encourage everyone to visit transremembrance.org to read the names of those we have lost. I also encourage all of us to prepare to do more to support our local transgender community by investing in the organizations locally who are protecting and supporting transgender people, much like we've done for our immigrant communities through the Fuel Network colleagues, and by being visibly supportive of the trans community whenever you can. And this is really our opportunity to show our trans constituents that their lives matter and that we are prepared to stand with them, not just today, but every day, and particularly through what will be a very tumultuous four years. So thank you, Mayor, for allowing me space to do this.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Valenzuela. On agenda or off, really appropriate, and really glad you brought this forward. Thank you. All right. Members, let's get to the consent calendar. Are there items that members would like to discuss separately or vote on separately? Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes, I don't need to pull the item, but I'd like my vote on item 17 to be recorded as a no.
Very good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Maple?
I just put comment on item seven.
Item seven. Very good. Councilmember Kaplan?
Quick comments on item six and 17.
Six and 17? All right. Very good. Do we have public testimony on the consent calendar, Madam Clerk?
I have no speakers on consent.
Okay. Then let's hear from the members. Councilmember Kaplan on item six.
Thank you, Mayor. My comments as it's relating to the motel owners for the city motel shelter program in conversations with our city auditor, I think she brought up a really good comment that I would like the council to consider, and an item come back for council direction, is what is the clear objective of our city motel shelter program? What is the vision and purpose of the program? What data are we using to measure the success of the program? Because how can we audit this program if there's no clear direction from council to the service providers on what the goals are for the length and the stay and the outcomes we are looking for?
Very good. Thank you. Vice Mayor Maple on item seven, Franklin Boulevard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just cannot pass up an opportunity to say good things about the Franklin Boulevard Complete Streets project. I know we've had some fits and starts, but just really want to thank and appreciate staff for all their work on this. It's a really exciting transformational project in my district, and want to congratulate George Reed, Inc., for being awarded the contract. Thanks.
Thank you. And last but not least, item 17, we have Councilmember Kaplan first, and then Councilmember Valenzuela.
And then I see Councilmember.
Oh, you didn't want to speak on that. I'm sorry.
Councilmember My Vang popped up, so just.
Did you, oh, go ahead, My.
Yeah, Mayor, I just also wanted to take a no vote on item 17. When I was a school board member, I led the effort to end the SRO contract, ask Sac City to unify school districts.
Okay.
I just wanted to put that on record. I'll be voting no on 17.
We'll make sure that's reflected in the motion. Right, Councilmember Valenzuela said she didn't need to speak on it. So Councilmember Kaplan, go ahead.
Yes, this is the contract for school resource officers for Nutomas Unified. As a school board member, this was an effort that I led in also changing the nature of our SRO officers, where Nutomas Unified specifically works for the Sacramento, works with the Sacramento Police Department to find the right fit of the officers that are about building relationships with our kids at our schools, which we've seen an actual decrease in violence and events on our campuses in working in a positive nature with our police department. And I want to thank the Nutomas Unified School District Board, who did pass this on the 13th, and this is just for ratification.
Okay. Thank you so much. So let's take a motion on the consent calendar with Councilmembers Vang and Valenzuela being recorded as a no on item 17. So moved in second. Did all in favor please say aye? Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Very good. Let's now move to item 18. This is the historic register here. Landmark, landmark. Is this controversial?
No, it is not.
And whose, whose district is this?
It's the district board of Bird area.
Oh, it's my district. Well, then I would like a lengthy presentation.
I can go on as long as you want.
Just brief. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Henry Fuse, preservation planner with the City of Sacramento. I'll be presenting the landmark nominations for 1146th Street and 1301, 1341 45th Street under file M24009. The property owners of 1146th Street retain the services of historic environment consultants who prepared the historic evaluation for the property. The historic evaluation attached to your staff report concludes that the East Sacramento property listed at 1146th Street was built, which was built in 1935, appears eligible for listing on the Sacramento Register of Historic and Cultural Resources under Criterion III pursuant to Sacramento City Code Section 17604210 for its embodiment of distinctive Tudor revival characteristics. These characteristics include a brick veneer, steep hip and gabled roofs, a recessed arch entry and entry door, multi-pane casement windows, and a large chimney. The property owners of 1341 45th Street also retain the services of historic environment consultants to prepare a historic evaluation for their property. The historic evaluation attached to your staff report concludes the East Sacramento property of 1341 45th Street, built in 1925, appears eligible for listing on the Sacramento Register of Historic and Cultural Resources under Criterion II for its association with George Pollock, who is significant as the builder of the Tower Bridge, Shasta Dam, and various projects for the U.S. Navy, as well as Ronald Reagan, who is significant as the former governor of California and president of the United States.
Wow, okay.
1341 45th Street is also appears eligible under Criterion III for its embodiment of distinctive Tudor revival characteristics.
All right. I think that's good. If it's not controversial, let's see if there's any public testimony. There is not? Let's take a motion on the item.
Motion to open and close.
Thank you.
We have public hearing.
I'll second.
I'll third, because it's my district. Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose? Abstain? All right. Very good. Thank you. Let's go to the next one. That is item 19.
So now I'll be presenting the R Street Historic District Ordinance Amendment and the R Street Historic District Plan Amendment under file M24007. So the history of this one is on July 30th, 1985, the city council adopted ordinance 85076, which added the R Street Historic District to the Sacramento Register of Historic and Cultural Resources. On December 10th, 2019, the city adopted ordinance 2019052, which amended the district to include contributing status to parcels within the district boundaries. There were no changes made to the district boundaries at that point. In mid-2024, city staff were approached by a representative of Highline Electric Company, which owns several properties on the north side of 1100 R Street. The representative inquired about redeveloping the block, which is partially located in the historic district. In response to the inquiries, city staff reviewed the historic status of buildings in the site and noticed an error in the district boundaries that did not align with the evaluation recommendations on file. The boundaries will be expanded to include 1117 R Street as a contributing resource and will change the status of 1730 12th Street to a non-contributing resource. The boundaries will also be expanded to include 1200 R Street as a contributing resource in response to a mid-2024 inquiry by a representative of that property owner regarding historic listing. Staff determined 1200 R Street was potentially eligible for listing as a contributing resource. According to the building descriptions in the two historic evaluation reports, the parcels located 1117 and 1119 R Street should be included as contributing resources in the historic district. Currently, 1117 is not included in the historic district and has no historic status. 1119 R Street is currently contributing resource, and it will not be altered and remain as such. The evaluations on file do not recommend the adjoining 1960s addition at 1730 12th Street to be a contributing element of the district. However, 1730 12th Street is currently listed as a contributing resource and will be identified instead as a non-contributing resource to match the recommendations found in the historic evaluation. The building at 1200 R Street, known as the Firestone Tire and Rubber Building, was built in 1925 during the period of significance and embodies the character-defining features of the formerly industrial historic district with its brick construction and little adornment and prominent loading dock facing R Street. Though the building has undergone some alterations, the character-defining Though the building has undergone some alterations, the character-defining features of the building have largely been preserved, and the alterations have been compatible. There are no other changes to the historic district proposed.
Okay.
One of—the—the last thing is that staff will be amending the historic district plan in response to the updated historic district boundaries, as you can see here. So, a notice to the public hearing describing the proposed amendments was sent to the property owners within the R Street Historic District. Additionally, the Preservation Sacramento, the Capital Area R Street Neighborhood Association, and Friends of Fremont Park, Richmond Grove Neighborhood Association, the R Street Partnership, and the Southside Neighborhood Association have been notified. As the land of the historic district, alterations and no objections have been received by staff. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Valenzuela, this is your district.
Yes, thank you, Henry. I'll open and close the public hearing and move this item.
Good, thank you. Uh, one second, let me just say, we know how much goes into this—the work, so please don't take the brevity of the—the presentation, or, you know, or maybe it's anything less than—the great respect for the work that you guys do.
Absolutely.
It's important, okay? All in favor please say aye. Eric, wait, Eric, go ahead.
You know, a quick question here. Was there any response back from the current business owners that are occupying some of those buildings? Some of them are—and and were there concerns about those that were being added?
So, staff met with the property owners for both of these buildings, and actually for 1200 R Street, the—the property owner was requesting getting it as a landmark because they were interested in the milzac program and other preservation incentives.
Very good.
And so, we—it kind of was—a—at the same time, we were doing this effort for the Highline buildings that that came through, and it was kind of perfect timing. And then, in response for the Highline buildings, staff met with the property owners for that, and this is actually clarifying the historic status, because the historic evaluations did already recommend those buildings as eligible.
Sure, I appreciate that as well. And then, obviously, the brick, you know, the structure of that is—it's a beautiful building, and—but sometimes I—I want to make sure that we're not catching people off guard, particularly the tenants of those facilities, so.
Yeah, the property owners—they are the property owners for that building, so they are aware.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that measure passes. Thank you. Again, let's now move to, you know, from historic preservation to labor agreements. Is—
So, Mayor, actually, item number 20, we're on 20, correct?
Yes, yes.
So, this item was supposed to be listed on our consent calendar. It is non-controversial, and there is no staff report.
Okay, so, is there public testimony?
There is not.
Then let's take a motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain? That was good. Okay, now, item 21 is the sideshow, but I think I want to do—how—is number 22 not controversial, the Delta Shores issue? Do we have any—Councilman Jennings, or—
But Vang is not there.
It's in her district. Okay, then let's do the sideshows, okay? Very good. Let's do item 21.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for this opportunity to present an ordinance amending Chapter 10.34 of Title 10 of the Sacramento City Code relating to spectators at sideshows, motor vehicle exhibitions of speed, motor vehicle speed contests, and reckless driving. You know, colleagues, this has been a long time coming and is a proposal that is affecting all of us in the city of Sacramento. I really want to thank the extensive work and engagement by our city staff, community partners, the city, and the district attorney's office to implement additional measures and give Sacramento Police Department additional tools to address the behavior of sideshows. For the most part, sideshows are addressed in our vehicle code. However, the governor just recently signed several pieces of legislation which make it easier for us as the city to address, and this legislation and changes in ordinance give us additional tools to make our community safer. As we know, sideshows are not only inherently dangerous, but they are damaging our roadways and put innocent bystanders in jeopardy. Sideshows are no longer what we think about from the 60s and 70s, what we see in old movies and how our parents and grandparents grew up, but they are more like criminal street parties organized on social media around vehicle stunt shows that involve dangerous maneuvers, ghost writing, and eventually, as we've seen here in Sacramento, lead to the death of several individuals. In the city, we've seen a rapid increase in sideshows and the dangers that they bring. In 2023, Sacramento PD received a total call of 277 calls related to sideshows, but they were only able to cite 51 individuals and tow 31 vehicles because of the dangerous nature of sideshows and not having as many officers that we need at the time sideshows show up. Just from January 1st to May 14th this year, 76 calls for concerns relating to sideshows were brought in, and only 19 arrests of individuals and seven vehicles were towed, but two firearms were also found. These stories are not unique to our districts, and part of my districts have felt sideshows over the past two years, something I hear from my community. In one instance, that took place in 2023 at an intersection close by two schools and two parks. We—parents were across the street when a sideshow came up from a park, and their child was playing at a park, and they were unable to return home. In their attempt to reach their child, they were verbally assaulted by spectators and at times had to jump from being run over by cars that were doing donuts. In the end, yes, they safely made it home, but that's not a story we want to allow to continue. Most recently, on September 22 of this year, two sideshows turned deadly in Natomas, leaving two individuals dead, one in South Natomas and one in North Natomas. The city cost, not only to the lives that were lost to the family members, but the four slurry, traffic control markings affected and associated administrative costs, cost the city $40,000. We talk about filling our potholes. Instead, we're replacing items and damage done by illegal sideshows, and these costs can go up to potentially $100,000 per sideshow. It is time to implement additional measures to protect the health and safety of residents and send a clear message that those participating in sideshows are harming our city. The reason this ordinance is specifically targeting spectators, organizers, and others who aid and abet is that sideshow street takeovers are all about social media. Spectators stand close to the cars doing the stunts to get the best videos for their platforms of choice, of which they're trying to make money from. Take away the audiences videoing these events, go after the spectators, take their cars for 30 days, cause several thousand dollars in fines that they have to pay, and drivers will be less interested in showing off and showing up for these events. Heavy fines and impound fees for cars parked at these events also may dull spectator enthusiasm. And I say this, please know in perspective that I grew up with my father owning cars from the 60s and 70s, souping them up, but he used to go to a legal drag strip in Woodburn, Oregon to race these cars. I come from a race car family. My Uncle Barry Kaplan built the first engine for long-nosed dragsters that went over 300 miles in the salt flats. I come from a car racing family, but we have to make a way where it is legal and does not damage our community. So, the proposed amendments, before you do a two—couple of things. They increase the violation that we already have on the books from promoting spectating or aiding and abetting from $500 to $1,000. They declare city code violations related to sideshows a public nuisance, because they are. They wake people up in the middle of the night, they destroy the peace in our neighborhoods. They make violations related to sideshows subject to civil actions and administrative penalties, because we should be able to recoup the costs of the damage that they cause. They protect the city's infrastructure. And lastly, they take laws that were recently passed and adopted by the governor and provide law enforcement with the ability to use all available technologies that are currently already being used, but specifically here as related to sideshows, including video and audio from technology such as drone security cameras, license plate readers, for the purposes of forcing the code for illegal activity relating to impound and allow, because the law 1987—19—let me make it right—1978, that was passed, allows for these to be used as evidence, for which then officers take to a magistrate and show the video evidence, and you can impound vehicles for up to 30 days. State law allows this, so this is just giving another tool for officers to not get in the middle of a sideshow and safely record and bring that evidence in front of a judge to be able to impound vehicles that were used for this. These proposed amendments offer a comprehensive approach to addressing the growing and escalating dangers posed by sideshows. It is critical that we act decisively to protect the safety of our residents and preserve the integrity of our public spaces. By increasing penalties, declaring sideshows a public nuisance, empowering law enforcement with modern technologies, we are making portent strides to improve sub-public safety and send a clear message that reckless behavior, illegal behavior, will not be tolerated in our city. I strongly believe that these changes will help curb the impacts of sideshows in our neighborhoods, reduce the harm they cause, and I urge my colleagues to support these amendments. I want to thank you for your consideration, thanks for the support from the Sacramento DA, who I've had conversations with, who looks forward to working with the SACPD and the city attorney on finding ways to further strengthen implementing these amendments, and I look forward to hearing public comments and comments from my councilmembers.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Kaplan. We have three members of the public who want to testify, so let's hear from the members of the public.
Thank you. Angela Miles, DE Redbains, and Lisa Prey.
Are you—go ahead.
Hi, I'm Angela Miles, and I am in support of this. I believe it's essential to implement stricter penalties and increase fines for individuals participating in and also spectaking—in. There's been so many injuries, deaths, it disrupts emergency systems, like police, ambulance, can't get places they need to go to help people they need to help because these people are blocking the street. It's dangerous, it's just dangerous. People out there, I mean, obviously are not law-abiding citizens, so people get shot out there and all types of stuff, so I think that you guys should choose to increase the penalties to keep Sacramento safe, if that's your goal. Thank you.
Next speaker is Redbains.
Good evening, everyone.
Aye.
I—I—I found out about this law that—that you proposed, and I was so happy. I—I live in North Natomas now, and it's—and I live—well, the Arco Arena is in my backyard, so you know, there's a lot of roadway around there, and these things have become so dangerous. You couldn't even dare walk down the street, you didn't know when they were going to show up, you didn't know what was—what was happening, but the noise also wakes you up. You can't have your windows open at night, you never know when it's going to start up again, and this—this is something I think we definitely need. We have license plate readers in my condo that—that we have there, and that—that we found out has been a real deterrent to having crime into our gated—little gated community and things like that. So, I think these—these—the—the drones, you know, everything like that, I think that's really important to fight this—this crime, and it also frees up our police officers to work on—on other crimes that are going on in our neighborhoods. So, I—I hope that you will pass this, it's really important to have—there's—there's young kids that are out there that are going to get hurt someday, as well as people already getting killed. So, thank you very much for your—
To hear it.
Thank you.
And Lisa Prey is our final speaker on this item.
Thank you. I'm Lisa Prey, I live in North Natomas. I live in an age-restricted community, which is very peaceful and calm, except for when people decide to cut donuts, or we have a traffic circle near our property, to speed around that traffic circle as quickly as they can and spin off at some point that you can't predict. I walk my dog, I don't know whether they're going to come and accidentally come toward me or go somewhere else. It's—it's very scary. We also see it probably every larger intersection throughout North Natomas, you see the results of these people cutting cookies and—and spinning out, and the damage they do in—in lifting some of the—the markers that let the firefighters know where the fire hydrants are. It's just really dangerous, so I say we should allow the police to use every tool that's available to them to identify the—the people who are doing this, and to make the punishment worth—mean something to the—to the perpetrators, and I hope that you will adopt this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's thank you to members of the public, let's turn it over to the members of the city council, Councilman Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Kaplan, for bringing this forward, and if she makes a motion, I'll—I'll be glad to second it, you know, and more so to say that it—we need to send a very strong message about the violence that we have on our streets from vehicle violence and from driver violence. And this—and I have to say that this is unfortunate, as you mentioned, here for just three testimonies, I hear this every single week. When I go to a community event, when I go to a park, I hear it consistently about not only just large groups, but individuals who are doing this. And it isn't just the long, major corridors. We had a ma—a—a large sideshow incident on Stockton Boulevard, right in front of the library, and one incident, but we also have it in—in our streets. I mean, I hear it from McMahon and Jansen, right next to our elementary school, and sadly, sadly, individuals who showed up at our youth soccer facility and were doing that as kids, and our young people were playing soccer and crossing the street from the parking lot, and, you know, in one of our largest regional parks there. So, one, I—I will second the motion when it's moved.
I'll make a motion to move the ordinance amendment.
Yep, and—and I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Very good.
But, two, to also ask our—our city staff, look at other legal avenues of administrative penalties, and I understand the vehicle code has some case law behind it, but I think we should begin to challenge some of those—those legal precedences and—with new information so that the courts can see whether we can or not go after administratively, and to look at these impoundment opportunities, to make sure if someone is using their car irresponsibly, then we should have the ability to go and impound that vehicle for its dangerous use. And with that, thank you for the work here. I also—I hope that our—our legislative team will look at support at the state level. Some of that is our biggest restriction right now. In many cases, an officer has to be present, and we need to be able to use other tools, other technology, to be able to address this. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you so much. Mayor Pritam Talavantis.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just want to give kudos to my colleague, Councilmember Kaplan, for proposing this, moving forward with this. And our city attorney's office, Susanna and your team, Emilio Camacho and Mike Benner, thank you so much for my briefing this morning. Councilmember Kaplan told me how hard you guys also worked on this ordinance, so thank you so much for bringing this forward. This is the city of Sacramento saying that your actions will and can have consequences. Sideshow's have become increasingly frustrating for our community, I know for myself as a resident, and honestly, just endangers our families. We've had several cars on North Gate crash into people's homes, into their fences, and then they're responsible for—like, the homeowners are responsible for fixing their own fence, even though they had nothing to do with it. And so, you know, we had 300-person car sideshow last month in Natomas that just became so dangerous, even for our police officers to go out there, and just the capacity issues. So, I'm really excited about this ordinance, I'll be voting yes, and, you know, in the months to come, like Councilmember Guerra said, if that's us doing lobbying and legislation at the Capitol, it's something we need to continue moving forward on, and also figuring out like what other tools we have in our tool bucket so that we can enforce this and so that we can deter this behavior.
That's great, thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. Grateful to hear the presentation today. This actually did not come to lawn ledge in this form, and so, I guess it's kind of my first, like, process point. I think we can all agree that sideshows in Sacramento are an incredibly serious issue, and what we want is a package of solutions that will stop the activity from happening, right? Don't want—I mean, yes, harsher punishment after the activity happens could be one part, but it's not the only part of a comprehensive strategy, and I want to lift up, I mean, early on, I think before you took office, Councilmember Kaplan, I know Councilmember Vang, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, were doing community meetings, were trying to figure out across South Sacramento what a unified response could look like, and so, I just want to note, I mean, most of this is already illegal. I appreciate that we're updating definitions to align with state law and adding in some new provisions, but I don't want this to be seen as the end of the work, because I think this notion that simply making punishment more harsh will deter crime has been disproven again and again and again, and so I want us to kind of push ourselves and challenge ourselves to think a little bit outside the box as well, and what other things we could be doing to understand the root cause of what's happening, why people are doing this and engaging in this, and what we could be doing to try to prevent it from happening in the first place. So, I'm going to abstain from this, just mostly out of process. So I'm going to abstain from this, just mostly out of process than anything else, because I feel like this warrants a really deep discussion, and I've heard several colleagues call for that discussion around what we're doing, what best practices are in other cities, what we're seeing in terms of data, and I think that's the type of discussion that this issue deserves. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Councilmember Kaplan, and also our district attorney as well, for their work on this. We've been working on this in the 10 years that I've been on this council, and every time we talk about it, I see the fear in the families that are anywhere near a sideshow. I see those who get hurt as a result of cars, as the speaker said, that are going one direction and all of a sudden a car goes another direction, and an innocent person is then injured. And what I'm happy about is the team that we put together, our police department, our fire department, this council, the district attorney, and everybody else that wants to be on this team, the team that we're putting together in order to mitigate it. We have tried different strategies that have been very costly in order to mitigate it, and we can't keep going down that road. So we are going the right direction now, in trying to make sure that this is not only something that's against the law, it's a public nuisance, it's something that we can now charge people for and potentially take their car for a period of time, something that's very precious to them. But we can hurt, hit them where it hurts, and so I'm very happy to see this happening. It's continuing in the progress that we have in order to enforce it, in order to keep our residents and constituents safe. So, thank you for your work on this.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Tao.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank you, Councilmember Kaplan, for working on this and bringing it forward. I know sideshows has been a big issue in my community district too, for a long time, all over Sacramento, and this is something that, you know, gives us a little push to really enforce or deal with this, this issues of sideshows. One thing I wanted to also see if, the city already has is that, you know, the, I see that we have a clear definition for sideshows, but then can we include street racing in this as well for spectators? Because I know street racing and sideshows go hand in hand, but I don't know if the sideshow is inclusive of this.
So sideshow is actually defined in the vehicle code, and so that's a great question, Councilmember Tao, because that was one of the things I originally wanted to include, and I, by great persuasion from our city attorneys, they try to not restate what is already in state law of what a definition of a sideshow is, where state law changed it, so it now is where it's a sideshow slash street takeover, kind of same definition as set forth in 23-109 I-2A.
Got it. I think remaining consistent with the state, you know, we don't want to redefine that, and so just wanted to see that, because I know street racing was a big thing before sideshows, and it is still a big thing in the community, that illegal street racing, and so we definitely want to see if we could be inclusive with that, but then, I'm very supportive of this, and that was just my comment to see.
No, and, and that is actually a really great question, because I will tell you, I'm working with our attorneys, well, why can't we include this? Well, why can't we include this? They're like, it is already spelled out in the vehicle code and state law, but the areas where we're hitting of tying state law together, and as Councilmember Jennings clearly stated, we're actually one of the first cities to add this in, is to charge it as a public nuisance. So that's where Sacramento is leading on this, and public nuisance is easier to prove, which will then lead it easier to impound a vehicle for 30 days and really try to dissuade behavior.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. First, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Councilwoman Kaplan for bringing this ordinance to the full council for consideration, and also want to thank Councilmember Jennings and Councilmember Guerra, I know we've had several town halls with the community on this item. I, I am in support of this with just some comments, and maybe some direction if Councilmember Kaplan will allow. I think this is a great start, you know, I know sideshow is a huge issue in my district in particular, and I think about the family that was stuck on Amherst and Metta View a couple years ago when the incident happened, and Councilmember Kaplan also shared about the deaths that happened in District 1, so we know that this is an issue impacting our city. I do also want to acknowledge at the same time that many of these spectators are young folks of color, and so want to be mindful that those are the folks that are showing up at the sideshows, because there are not other activities for things, for them to do, and so Councilwoman Valenzuela spoke about the comprehensive approach that we need to take, and I do see that this is one part of it, I don't see this as the end-all, and so I just want to name that as well. But I think a direction that needs to happen with this ordinance is if these, the, the fees and all of the, when police is doing enforcement, I actually want to know the demographics and how are we doing, because I think that's really important, because we can pass an ordinance, but it can also have consequences as well, and so I think even if it's a, once this is approved, even if it's a six months or a year, to come back to see, is this ordinance, does it make sense? Is it working? And what are we also doing to really prevent it from happening? Because I agree with Councilwoman Valenzuela that this is only one tool, I think looking at prevention as well. The other piece, I'm just, and maybe Councilwoman Kaplan, because you're the lawyer in, in the space, I just want to be cognizant of, I was reading some of the language, and some of the language talks about if one or more person gathers on a street with this, for a sideshow, and I just want to make sure, because I was trying to Google the vehicle code and to see what that was, because what I'm afraid of is that, like, one or two folks are on the street, and maybe they have a cool souped-up car, but they're not going to engage in a sideshow, and then the police fines them, right? I think for me, that is probably one of my biggest concern, and we wouldn't want to pass something that actually ends up hurting folks of color, and so I just wanted to just name that, to make sure that, and I'm trying to look up the actual definition code, because in the state of California, but to make sure that it's not just two people, like, two young folks hanging on the street, and they're, you know, it's their car, and they're not engaging in sideshow, but they don't get ticketed, or they don't get fined by police, so I just want to make sure that that's not part of that.
So it's, look up vehicle code 23-109.
I know, it's not in the ordinance, huh? The actual, I know.
No, because, yeah, the city attorney man, I tried. I tried, they want to remain consistent with our codes and ordinances, but I just want to, that's a great question, Councilmember Vang, so as kind of quote-unquote divined, it's two or more persons who block and impede traffic for the purpose of performing motor vehicle stunt, speed contests, exhibitions of speed. So if somebody has stopped and cited, our officers already know they have to meet the definition as set forth in state law of what a sideshow or street racing is. So it can't be they assume two kids just sitting there are going to do something, they actually have to be doing something to meet the definition of sideshow as it is set forth in the vehicle code.
Okay. That is my, that is our hope, right? I just, you just never know how officers can interpret it. So I, I think for me, I think as a council, as we move forward on this ordinance, I think monitoring it, so my direction is like, to come back in six months or a year to see how this ordinance is doing, maybe the implications of it too, and if it's working, that's great, but I think it's important for us to monitor that.
Totally acceptable, because I'm generally asking our police department to give me updated statistics and stats that they have this, so I think, because this mostly will go into effect in January 1st, when the other state laws go into effect, so that they can all go together, and it could just be part of our discussion that comes back in six months, what do we see?
And the DA has to prosecute.
Yes, yes. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I guess, yeah, that's great. I just want to share an incident, so I have two boys, soon to be my two boys, well, I call my boys anyways, because I'm getting married this weekend, and they took me, they're probably going to watch this later, because they're like, what? There's an ordinance on sideshows? Okay. But they actually took me to my first car show, and it was on Florin Road. I don't know if they had a permit or not, but I went anyways, because they really wanted to, to show me these new cars, and it was a really peaceful, amazing car show. But there were folks that, you know, I think knew about it, drove up, and they were speeding on Florin Road, but it was none of the folks that was having coffee and showing their cars at this auto shop. And I, I share that story because I'm always worried about interpretation by our officers or by folks who are enforcing the laws, right? I think about if I'm sitting there, if I'm having my cup of coffee with my two boys, we're going to a car show, and then like, we're also spectators, because I'm at this car show, and there's two cars speeding, like, do I call, am I going to get arrested by having coffee with my two boys at a car show, and there's a sideshow happening? So I just, I think, I, I want to share, like, a lived experience, what happens in that situation, right? So for us to consider all those factors, and so, but I also acknowledge the harm of sideshows, because I, I've, I've seen it firsthand, I live right next to an elementary school, I hear it, by the time I get out, they're already gone, I'm trying to record it on my phone, because, you know, it's, it's not just a nuisance, but it's dangerous for our students, and so I'm holding space for both, I just want us to be thoughtful as we're moving forward with this ordinance, that it actually doesn't cause more harm. And so just wanted to name and share that, that lived experience, because I'm, I'm reading the definition, and I might get arrested for having coffee with my boys, watching a car show, and then like, folks are doing a sideshow, and I happen to be there, I, that can happen. So I just think it's important to think about the, the complexity of, you know, any, any scenario, right? And to make sure that as we're enforcing, that we do it in a way that's also thoughtful as well, so I wanted to share that. Thanks.
Good, thank you so much, good, very good point. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Couldn't, couldn't resist but to add my own comments.
Oh.
No, I, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I, I did listen to all my colleagues, and just want to say thank you also to Councilmember Kaplan for your work on this, as well as the other members that have been working on this for years, and certainly get a lot of complaints from constituents in my communities about sideshows and the risks and the dangers of them, and so I think this is a really good first step, and, you know, like some of the other members said, I think there might be other steps that we need to take as we assess. I agree that we should take a look, with anything that we do, we should always take a look after six months, a year, two years, whatever it looks like, and see whether or not what we're doing is effective and it's working. And so just, I just want to appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, and, and I just wanted to say thank you, because I didn't mention this, you know, a lot of the hard work prior to me was Jennings, Vang, and Guerra working on this, acknowledging though, that it affects every one of our districts, and while I am kind of concentrating a little bit more on spectator behavior, realize that this also goes after promoters, those on social media, of which we have phenomenal SAC PD IT guys that know how to get on the dark web, I don't understand what any of that means, but they are working hard to try and intercept what is going on, and how can we stop it ahead of time. But I will agree, this is not the answer. This is just one more tool to see if it can help us, and I am, look forward to if there are any, any other ideas or proposals that we can do to change things, to curb this behavior beforehand. And I too, Councilmember Vang, I grew up and I still like car shows, because I'm a, you know, I'm a car girl inherently, that we make sure that this is, this is implemented correctly, because cars are really cool, we just need to stop the illegal behavior, but thank you to my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan, all the councilmembers worked on this, the city attorney as well, I know, you know, interesting follow-up question, who's actually going to prosecute when this happens? It's going to be the city attorney, which raises other policy questions about, I mean, I'm grateful that you're doing it, I just wonder if we've had discussions with the district attorney, as we have, about prosecuting misdemeanors that are serious.
I did have a conversation with the district attorney, and I have connected
And?
the district attorney prosecutor, as well with the city attorney, to have those conversations, because our SAC PD and city attorney can, can do the work, but if it doesn't get prosecuted, this doesn't get put in, and I can tell you, DA did send me an email letter of support, and that his team will be working to implement and enforce this.
Good, I, I think oversight, just as you probably had oversight of this council and body, but making sure that that occurs is as important as the ordinance that we're passing tonight, so thank you. Briefly, I just really appreciate my Vang's point too, about not stigmatizing the great and legitimate car clubs and lowriders, and all the great things we have around car culture here, it's beautiful, it's great, and that's different from people acting stupid. And that's what this is, it's common sense, it's, it's acting stupid in ways that really are dangerous. And, and so if you choose to be a silent or cheering witness to people acting recklessly, there ought to be a consequence for it, and that's what this does. I think it's appropriate. All right, with Councilmember Valenzuela said okay if we register you as an abstention, I'm going to say all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstain. Okay. We have one more brief item before we get to the other main event for the evening, and that is the Delta Shores Community Facilities District. I don't think this is controversial. Do we need a presentation on this, or Councilmember Vang and Jennings? Are you, what's that? Let's open and close, why don't you do it?
We can open and close.
It's a discussion item, do we have public testimony?
I do not.
All right, so that, we, come on up, sorry. A very brief, very, very brief presentation, we don't have public testimony, so we'll...
You don't have much anxiety she has every time she puts up.
I'm sorry, God, it is not...
We've allotted an hour for you to speak.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Tell us, tell us in layperson's language what this is.
This is purely the authorization to issue bonds for Delta Shores on improvement area number one.
Who's paying for the improvements?
All the property owners within the improvement area number one.
Gotcha. No city general fund money?
Nope.
Okay, that's a good...
I'll move, I'll move the item, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, open and close the public hearing?
Sounds great.
All right, yes. Okay. No public testimony? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain. Thank you so much for, again, a lot of hard work goes into sometimes very short presentations, and...
I really love it.
I, yes.
Down before you.
All right. Members, now what we're going to do is we're going to take items 23, 24, and 25 together, one set of, what's that? What, one?
No, I'm sorry. City manager and I have a side gig, I won't, this is going to go.
Oh, well, you know, this is one worth going a long time, actually. So 23, 24, 25, we're going to take together one set of public testimony on all three items, we do need separate votes, and I'm going to begin with a brief opening statement. So first of all, a great thank you to the city team, the city staff, all sitting in the front here, really, you, you've done and continue to exemplary work on all parts of this. Ellen especially, thank you, I know this has been your, your main project, I just wanted to really say thank you, and Leslie, of course, and everybody, so thank you, Howard, to you and your team. I want to, this is why I'm going to start my little thing tonight, I want to talk about the year 1964. It's 1964, now, in 1964, the Beatles arrived in New York and went on the Ed Sullivan Show. Lyndon Johnson was re-elected, or elected actually, for the first time as President of the United States in a landslide over Barry Goldwater. Patsy Mink was the first woman of color to be elected to the Congress. 1964, of course, the Civil Rights Act passed in, in the United States, and in 1964, I was not a junior member of the city council. I was five years old, most of you were not born, actually. Now, why is 1964 so important and relevant tonight? Because maybe astonishingly, 1964 was the last time, prior to 2022, that the city had in place an ordinance declaring how the hotel tax proceeds could be spent in this city. And of course, that 1964 ordinance really limited the ability to spend hotel tax money on convention center and expansion and community center theater, and even though there was a little ambiguity about being able to stretch that, it was at best ambiguity, 1964. It was also, I'm not sure the exact year, but it was the mid-1960s, 60 years ago, the last time the city of Sacramento put together a plan to develop the old Sacramento waterfront. It's been over 60 years. And so tonight, we have the opportunity to make a generational decision. Many have talked about it, tonight, we get to begin to modernize our waterfront for the next 60 years. And that is not all we get the opportunity to do tonight, because as the city grows, we recognize that building a modern economy, especially around the creative economy, around tourism, is not just about one thing, which was really the reason why I think the voters said yes to Measure N in 2022. It's about building more hotels, and tonight, we have a proposal to take the next big step towards building a convention center hotel that will be physically linked and attached to the convention center, and that will be a major boon for... and that will be a major boon for our downtown, our central city. We also, tonight, will have the opportunity to allocate several million dollars to continue making Sacramento the city of festivals, the city of festivals, and specifically the city of music festivals. Combine that with this historic and generational opportunity to redevelop the waterfront. Tonight is a big night for all of us here in the city of Sacramento. It's amazing when you, when you get around this city over many years, how many people talk about the waterfront? And they ask, when are we going to begin doing something? And we know our neighbors in West Sacramento have done a lot on their side. And on our side, we've had some opportunities, but really, the biggest opportunity we had six years ago, where we were going to invest $45 million, was halted by COVID. But like last week's success with the rail yards, we could have folded it up and said, well, let's wait for another generation, or at least another 10 years, but we didn't. And the staff and the community and the business community and Visit Sacramento, Michael Alt, and all the business leaders, they said, no, stay at this. And so the plan tonight is a little bit different, but it's still as bold. And maybe it's even better because last time, we didn't really think as much about how we were going to induce more private investment. That was one of the ideas and one of the ends that we saw, but it wasn't really central to the plan. This is central to the plan. $45-plus million, including the state and federal money, to basically induce the private sector to tell us and our city, what is it going to take to keep the historic nature of Old Sacramento, but make it a much cooler, more modern, date night kind of a, kind of a place? That's for adults, but also for children and families and more outdoor spaces and more access to the river itself, visually and even tactically, touching the water. So let's hear from the team and let's get going on a, on an important set of considerations and hopefully some big decisions tonight. Leslie, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I don't feel like I should give a presentation at all. I think you just gave the introductory presentation.
Oh, sorry. Go right ahead.
I could turn it over to Ellen and Megan, but I will give you some highlights. So my name's Leslie Fritsch. I'm here with Ellen Sullivan and Megan Van Voorhees. Present to you for consideration a package of investments as you've outlined, using the city's transit occupancy tax. The TOT, as we know it affectionately, is the revenue generated from each hotel stay, adding a 12% tax to each of those stays. TOT has rebounded well in Sacramento. We've actually done really well and we have exceeded our pre-pandemic revenues, generating over $40 million in the last fiscal year, the highest level of TOT that the city has ever received. The three projects staff will present tonight provide unique opportunities to preserve and grow the city's TOT, from investing in the waterfront, as you described, Mayor, to Sacramento's, which is Sacramento's premier tourist destination, to supporting Sacramento's iconic events, to capitalizing on the city's newly renovated convention center with the addition of a new convention center hotel. These projects exemplify the intended use of TOT as defined by the passage of Measure N, which broadened the eligible uses of TOT. Thought it would be important to highlight what actually TOT included because it actually is a pretty broad range. So here we go. I know this is quoting City Code, but Councilmember Kaplan voted, talked about the vehicle code, so I think it's okay if I quote the City Code here. The code reads that the revenue from the transit occupancy tax account shall be used solely and exclusively for the following purposes: administration, economic development projects to create local jobs, acquisition, construction, completion, operation, repair, and maintenance of visitor-serving facilities that promote tourism, economic development, and other activities that bolster the local economy, such as convention halls and centers, theaters and art venues, public off-street parking facilities, site improvements, lands, easements, rights of way. In addition, it includes expense in connection with proposals or proceedings for those acquisitions of the facilities outlined above, or interest in principal payments on bonds and lease payments for lease of any of the facilities referred to in that section. So that's what the expanded Measure N allowed us to use. And all of the projects we're bringing forward today fit very well into this category, really focusing on number three, which is focusing on the local economy and tourism and economic development. So each of the three presentations that follow will emphasize how the projects amplify and grow Sacramento's tourism industry, further diversifying our local economy. It's basically building on our history and creating the place to be, the place we want to be in Sacramento. With that, I'll turn it over to Ellen Sullivan, Senior Project Manager of our Office of Innovation and Economic Development, for the presentation of the Waterfront Reinvestment Program. We'll roll right through into the, into the iconic events and then wrap it up with Convention Center Hotel and along the way, open to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ellen Sullivan, Senior Project Manager with Innovation and Economic Development Department. Oh goodness. I'm just zipping through this. I've got it backwards. Oh my goodness. Well, the mayor said he wanted a quick pro. Can you reset that, please? Thank you. The 2016-27 budget priorities adopted by the city council included an initiative to invest in the Sacramento Riverfront as an economic driver for the region's economy. In 2019, city council approved a plan, Destination Sacramento, to leverage the city's existing riverfront assets and redevelop the Old Sacramento waterfront as a premier riverfront destination. The Old Sacramento waterfront was selected as the first stage of riverfront redevelopment because it is already a strategic riverfront destination. It is one of seven national historic landmark districts in the state and attracts over 4 million visitors a year. It serves as a gateway to the city and the region. With museums, parades, and other events, it serves as a civic and cultural amenity and has existing public spaces like the Embarcadero that are open and available for all of Sacramento's residents to use. However, the Old Sacramento waterfront is an underutilized economic asset. Efforts continued on Destination Sacramento through the schematic design phase. Unfortunately, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, project funding was reallocated to other city TOT eligible obligations and the project was paused. During this pause, staff developed a two-pronged waterfront recovery strategy for the Old Sacramento waterfront. Clean and Safe Activities for Old Sacramento, utilizing American Rescue Plan Act funding for improvements to Old Sacramento, and the Waterfront Reinvestment Program, made up of six larger-scale projects that are currently unfunded but are TOT eligible or have secured grant funding. Here are some examples of the ARPA-funded Clean and Safe Activities. They range from installation of new LED gas lamp fixtures, police pod cameras, wayfinding signage and kiosks, to improvements installed by the Downtown Sacramento Partnership, like planters, string lights, and seasonal decor. Staff continues to use ARPA investments for immediate maintenance and business support in the Old Sacramento waterfront, which are critical, especially with increased crowds anticipated with the Oakland A's move to West Sacramento next year. The Waterfront Reinvestment Program consists of six tourism projects necessary for the continued vitality of the district. The Public Market Buildings, the Waterfront Redevelopment Opportunity, Boardwalk Replacement, K Street Barge Hole Repair, River Docks, and the Native American themed Children's Play Area. The Public Market Buildings, Waterfront Redevelopment Opportunity, Boardwalk Replacement, and K Street Barge Hole Repair projects have been determined to be TOT eligible because they are economic development projects that create local jobs and are repair and maintenance of visitor-serving facilities that promote tourism, economic development, and other activities that bolster the economy. The North and South Public Markets are envisioned as high-performing regional destination that anchor the historic district, attracting locals and tourists with a unique Sacramento-source shopping experience. This project will create a market destination and serve as a small-business incubator, supporting new businesses and selling local Sacramento goods. Phase one of the project is the feasibility phase, which includes some necessary building maintenance and consultant work comprised of a business plan to guide the city on the building's optimal uses and how to manage and lease the buildings, as well as informing the next phase of the design work. Phase two includes full buildout of the market buildings and surrounding open space. However, we are not requesting phase two funding at this time. Given the prime waterfront location of the former Rio City Cafe Building and the city's goal for quick activation, staff has engaged a consultant to attract the highest and best user for the site. Staff anticipates issuing a consultant-guided solicitation for the former Rio City Cafe site by the first quarter of 2025. Based on the results of the solicitation, the city could consider capital repairs or improvements to the property. Simultaneously, staff will issue a request for proposals for the Steamers Building, shown at the bottom left of the slide, for an outdoor dining opportunity along the Embarcadero. Together, these two sites will offer waterfront dining options to further attract visitors to Old Sacramento. There is over one mile of wooden boardwalks that are a vital part of the tourist experience in Old Sacramento. The last comprehensive boardwalk replacement project was completed in 2005. And since then, the city has only had funding for piecemeal repairs. A full boardwalk replacement is necessary to ensure a safe, unique experience for visitors. The K Street Barge provides ADA access to the public dock system with an elevator housed on the barge. The Delta King is also attached to the barge. Over its lifespan, the barge hull has deteriorated significantly and if not repaired, it would severely limit public access to the docks and the Delta King. Connected to the K Street Barge is the city's existing dock system. It requires maintenance to ensure continued safe public access to the docks and the waterfront. The dock system allows the Sacramento community and visitors to experience and reconnect with the Sacramento River in a safe and engaging way. The city, in collaboration with the Shingle Springs Band of Miwok and Wilton Rancheria, have designed this play area with a riparian corridor theme. The play area will feature an entryway and a central iconic play structure with climbing nets and slide, smaller play structures that represent tulie boats, tulie huts, and rock mortars with play surfaces mimicking the natural landscape. Together, these elements will illustrate local indigenous ways of life along the river. The play area will be located at the site of the current Old Schoolhouse, which will be removed as part of the project. The schoolhouse is historically inaccurate for the district and was originally intended to be a temporary structure. In order to move forward with four of the six Waterfront Reinvestment Program projects, TOT bond funding is required. The total cost of all phase one TOT-funded projects is $25 million. And with the addition of phase two, the overall project cost is estimated to reach up to $40 million. If phase one is approved by council, the TOT bond issuance is anticipated to occur in the first quarter of 2025. The future phase two of the Waterfront Reinvestment Program will involve continued redevelopment, including full buildout of the public market buildings and surrounding open space. The grant-funded project totaled approximately $7.4 million. Timing on the projects differs by funding source and complexity. The grant-funded projects can begin quickly. We anticipate the river docks design work to start in the spring and the children's play area to start construction next June and be completed by December. The boardwalk repairs and waterfront redevelopment opportunity are also slated to start in spring, but start dates would be dependent on the bond issuance. We are here tonight to request council to direct staff to proceed with implementation of the Waterfront Redevelopment Program, authorize the city treasurer to initiate transient occupancy tax revenue bond financing, and to transfer up to $324,560 to the Children's Play Area Fund. And this concludes my presentation. And I would like to turn it over to Megan Van Voorhees to present on iconic events.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's nice to see you. I'm Megan Van Voorhees. I'm the Director of Convention and Cultural Services for the City of Sacramento. And it's my job to introduce iconic events as a part of this investment strategy. It is clear that over the years, Sacramento has established itself as the city of festivals, drawing attention as a tourism destination through events such as the Farm to Fork Festival, Aftershock, Golden Sky, Soul Bloom, and more. These iconic events generate substantial economic benefits. For here, I'm going to talk about two festivals in particular, mostly because we don't have a lot of, like, a wider festival economic impact study, but with something that we've talked with Visit Sacramento, something being very valuable in this broader discussion. In 2024, Aftershock and Golden Sky together contributed $44.6 million to the economy, supported 13,384 jobs, and generated $1.3 million in local and state sales tax revenues. Speaking specifically to jobs, the kinds of jobs that are supported through these activities include everything from security and stagehand labor that relies on these kinds of events and activities to all sorts of food and hospitality and retail, retail jobs as a result of, of the investments that the producers are making as far as these events. Those same events increased hotel occupancy with 87,646 visitors from outside the region and 111,286 room nights in 2024 alone. And I think it's worth it to note that those events take place over the course of two separate weekends. So that's a sizable return on investment. And again, I just would like to draw that this is data from only two of the iconic music festivals that have called Sacramento home. And the richness of Sacramento's festival scene reflects the city's diverse cultural landscape and serves as a home for cultural expression and cross-cultural understanding. I also need to draw out some of the things that we've seen in the current music festival environment because we've positioned largely investments in that space. We see that rising production costs, inflation, and shifting consumer habits have led to financial struggles for festivals. Costs for security, insurance, and artist pay, combined with hesitant consumer spending, have forced many festivals around the world to reduce operations or cancel entirely. The solution, or at least as part of what we're bringing forward to you for your consideration today, Visit Sacramento is requesting a one-time budgetary increase of $2 million for fiscal year 2024-25 to sustain its efforts in iconic event production. These funds will allow Visit Sacramento to adapt to the challenges facing the industry, ensuring the continued growth and impact of Sacramento's festival scene. In terms of the use of this for transient occupancy tax, this provides a logical funding source for this initiative. And I'll remind you again, festivals directly drive TOT revenue. And again, with the data that we have with Aftershock and Golden Sky, generating $2.27 million in TOT in 2024. This would be eligible for funding through the transient occupancy tax as an economic development project that creates local jobs. And that's the intent of how this has been positioned for you. One last thing that I will draw attention to is conditions on the use of the funds. The first investment that we made, a substantial investment for these kinds of iconic events, came through the ARPA Reinvestment Program. And as a part of that investment, there were a set of conditions in terms of what festivals would have to achieve in terms of receiving funding. Events that are selected must achieve significant tourism-related impacts as demonstrated by out-of-town attendance, hotel room bookings, and TOT sales tax generation, attendee spending on parking, restaurants, and retail, engagement of local support services, such as cruise rentals, security, and associated spending. Events must also reflect Sacramento's unique identity through representation of local artists, musicians, breweries, wineries, and restaurants, and then community engagement before, during, and after the event via local music venues and activities, as well as partnerships with local creative sector businesses. And we know that events must report quantitative and qualitative data to demonstrate equitable outcomes and progress towards equity goals. So that is, those are the major points. I'm happy to share any, any data or information at your request. I'm happy to share any data or information at your request on what we saw from the first investment in terms of how we really prioritize some of those conditions. After this, yes. It's been a while, you guys.
You're doing great. Hey.
So I'm happy to answer any questions about that first investment, if you have them. I have some of the data points for that, and Mike Testa is also available to answer any questions that you might have. But for now, I'm going to turn it back to Leslie Fritchie to talk about the hotel.
The hotel. Thank you so much, Megan. Great work, really. You and your team, it's just great.
Okay, so there's two more slides, and then I think we'll wrap it up for your questions. So the last item in this trilogy of tourism investments for your consideration tonight is the potential development of a convention center hotel. So when the convention center expansion was first contemplated, there was a lot of discussion about including a convention center hotel at the same time. And as a matter of fact, the hotel was studied as part of the EIR for the convention center. So the importance of the linkage between the convention center and an adjacent convention center hotel cannot be overstated. According to Visit Sacramento, one out of three convention opportunities that we miss is attributed to not enough hotel rooms. That equates to almost a half a million hotel nights, along with related additional visitor spending. But it's not conventions alone that we miss. We miss the ability to attract events, such as the NBA All-Star Game, or something I'm particularly fond of, women's AA basketball playoffs, and special meetings and seminars. We have the opportunity to change that situation and attract some of those iconic events and activities. Staff has been approached by an experienced developer, Tony Gianoni, to develop a 350-room, full-service hotel just immediately adjacent to the convention center at 15th and K. It would include meeting rooms, restaurants, parking, and it would be connected to the convention center through a skybridge, as you see on the rendering here. He's also secured a long-term lease on the land and a commitment from Hilton Hotels as the flag. Much like convention center hotels in other markets, this hotel is likely to require city financial assistance in its development. The project, from a revenue standpoint, would generate approximately $2.6 million annually in property and sales tax, along with an estimated $2.8 million in TOT. Tonight's proposed action is to indicate the city's support for the hotel's development with a potential pledge of the TOT generated by the hotel itself. The motion does not outline specific terms or limits, but indicates the city's willingness to consider a commitment with the terms to be determined upon full underwriting and financial feasibility analysis. The project, at this point, is not financially feasible in this current rate environment, but the proposed action by council tonight will signal the city's support for this important investment and allow the development team to further design, cost out, and attract investors. This commitment would have a sunset date of three years from council approval. Should city financial assistance be required when the pieces come together, staff would return to council with definitive documents outlining the terms of the city's investment. I would like to introduce, for just a few words, Tony Gianoni, who is proposing this hotel and has been a longstanding member of the convention business and our hospitality efforts here.
And a true believer in Sacramento and all of its potential. Tony, come on down.
Mayor and members of the city council, obviously you've heard my name. Tony Gianoni is my name, and I am the managing member of Sacramento Convention Center Hotel LLC. As I sat here earlier today and saw all those young students in the wonderful program that the mayor that you proposed and had running, I was hoping that perhaps you might make an age exception, and I could become number 951. I would love to do that.
You're in.
I'm in? Oh, that's wonderful. On to the business at hand. I was fortunate to be one of several Visit Sacramento board members that worked on the committee for the expansion of the convention center and the renovation of the community center theater. And it therefore gives me great pleasure in bringing to you the final piece of the puzzle that will complete the transformation of the east end of K Street into a true convention and theater district. It will also support the city's investment in that district. Now, you have all the specifics on the screen in terms of the size of the hotel, the number of rooms, and so forth, but I did want to mention one thing in addition to that. The hotel is being designed by a gentleman named Mark Hornberger of Hornberger &amp; Wurstel. Mark Hornberger was also, he's a preeminent West Coast hotel designer, but he also designed Meridian Plaza, an office building here in Sacramento at the corner of 14th and L Street across from Capitol Park. So he's very familiar with Sacramento and what we like to have in terms of design for our projects. As Leslie mentioned, it's currently planned to be a Hilton Hotel, and Hilton is very excited about extending their presence in downtown Sacramento. The property itself is currently owned by 1418 K Street Investors. That's a group headed by Angelo Sikopoulos, and Angelo has graciously provided us with a long-term option to lease this property in order to be able to construct this hotel. Now, we've explored, so there's still many hurdles for this project to overcome, the main one being the current financing markets. And so without those financing markets in the shape that we want them to be in to make this possible, you might be wondering, why is this project here tonight? Well, in exploring both the investment and financing markets, we've learned that the certainty of the city's desire for this site and this particular hotel is critical, because there are a lot of other potential developments that could go onto this location. So the investors and the financing people look to see whether or not the city is truly committed to having a convention center hotel on this site, and in particular, this convention center hotel. Also, our current investors are looking at significant additional costs to move this process through the city design review process. And so having the city's commitment to this hotel makes that much easier. Now, despite what Leslie mentioned, we're not sure yet whether this project will require city assistance. Most likely, but as the markets get better, that assistance becomes smaller and smaller and smaller. So if city assistance is needed, we are committed to making the TOT from this hotel only as our source of city assistance. We're not looking to other sources of TOT at this juncture, just the TOT coming from this hotel. So there's no question that this project will have a major economic impact on our city and on the convention and theaters, the convention and theater district in particular. And I believe that we've seen what's happened on the west end of K Street, and I think that this hotel will have the same impact on the east end of K Street. So I appreciate your consideration of this project and the assistance that your positive vote will give us in securing the necessary financing to make this hotel a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you so much. All right, I'd like to call up our city treasurer, John Colville, and Visit Sacramento CEO, Mike Testa, as well. John, maybe I'm going to start you with a question. How much money is in the city's TOT bond fund? In other words, how much can we bond without raising the rate on TOT? Because we're talking about $40 million of city TOT money for this project. What does that leave us?
So you get to the point, Darrell. Good. I've had a lot of questions from a lot of your colleagues about worrying about this might be deplete or preclude other projects. Specifically, when we did Measure N, it was really because of my group. We wanted to do something with 102 acres. So we wanted to expand the use of TOT outside the central city into other areas. So the good news is, after you approve this $25 million, hopefully, because it is a great deal, there's still over $100 million left in bonding capacity.
Forty. The second phase is 15, so it's 40 in total.
Well, I'm telling you, right now, aside from the 25, there's between 100 and 123 million dollars in additional bonding capacity.
It's great. Okay.
I mean, the TOT's, it's amazing, because the TOT was growing about 2.3% prior to the COVID. We'd lost 50% of our, we went from 35 million annually to 17 million, and then it only took us two years to come back, where the industry said it was going to take four. So the resilience of Sacramento, the addition of the creative economy, and the culinary and the diversification away from business, because business hasn't come back travel. And Visit Sac's work and the convention centers really brought us back. So just a caveat, the $100 million, though, because that's what I do, you know? I'm very conservative. It always is 12 months looking backwards. So depending on what happens when you need the money, or when Eric, potentially, you need the money, you got to look 12 months back. So hopefully, we're still progressing. I mean, we're up 13 and a half percent from pre-COVID. That's not really sustainable, because as previous speakers indicated, we don't have the hotel rooms to really keep that exponential growth. So I think that hotel's key to keep growing the TOT. But 100 to 123 million, based on whether it's taxable or tax exempt.
Good.
That's based on.
Interest rates, if they continue to fall, that number could grow.
That's optimistic, because a lot of the, you would think interest rates would fall with the Fed cutting rates, but with the new four-year term, who knows? It looks like interest rates are going to stay higher.
Can I just ask a follow-up question on what you just said? Because part of the end of your sentence there was kind of banking on additional TOT from this hotel, but the agreement in front of us tonight is to potentially commit that additional TOT to the hotel. Does that change your forecasting at all on the condition of the TOT funds?
Well, the interesting way this works is, the covenants of the 2018 bonds, where we issued 280-plus million for the C3 project, all TOT has to come into the top of the waterfall. So by rebating back to them, doesn't affect that. The reality is, is there money left over at the bottom after we pay debt service, after we pay O and M, after we pay everything, after we do the powerhouse science center, which is, is there money left over to rebate them? And if growth keeps going, there shouldn't be a problem, but it won't affect the bonding capacity, because it has to come to the top of the waterfall.
That's a good question. Okay, very good. Thank you, John.
That's it.
Mike, Mr. Testa? Great job, John, by the way. Thank you.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Mike Testa, president and CEO of Visit Sacramento. I think it's important that we start at the top here, that these investments being discussed tonight are not investments in tourism, they're investments in Sacramento. Investments that will generate economic activity and improve the quality of life for our residents, not the tourists. Tourism isn't about the tourists, it's about the people who live in the community, and that's what this is. And the great thing about these projects is that they're being funded by the tourists, they're not being funded by the local residents. You talk about Old Sacramento, Old Sacramento is a significant draw for visitors to come to Sacramento and has been for a long time. You think about the gold rush history of 1849, and you think about the recent Gold Rush Days event that's happened in Old Sacramento in previous years. We're excited and grateful that you guys are prioritizing Old Sacramento. It's a huge draw from a leisure travel standpoint, there's so much heritage and history in that district that is worth celebrating. When it comes to music festivals, while cities across California have seen their post-COVID hotel bookings drop by 28%, bookings in Sacramento have increased by more than 80%. The reason for that is music festivals. You heard the city treasurer just talk about business travel remains down, conventions are still convening, we're still booking a lot of conventions, but attendance is down. Nationally, music festivals have saved, in many ways, the economy in Sacramento. In 2024, the three largest festivals in Sacramento generated more than $45 million in economic impact for local businesses. These festivals generated 14,000 temporary jobs, and they delivered enough visitors to fill Sacramento's 83 hotels more than eight times, which drove more than $2.4 million in TOT revenues for the city and the county. These are investments that return back to the city. It's no secret that music festivals everywhere are struggling. Sacramento's R&B festival, Soul Bloom, canceled earlier this year, and even names like Coachella, which is the most-attended annual music festival in North America, saw ticket sales drop by 15% in 2024. It is essential to Sacramento's economy that we continue to support music festivals, and it's why voters passed Measure N last year by almost 70%, to ensure that the money generated by tourism gets reinvested to attract additional tourism generators and their associated revenues for our businesses and residents. And last, the hotel. When the City of Sacramento invested to modernize Sacramento's Safe Credit Union Convention and Performing Arts District, we knew that the project would be a catalyst for a convention hotel. COVID unfortunately had some other ideas. People have said to me, we've got a new convention center, you must be booking bigger conventions now. The reality is, we're not. We're booking more conventions, but we don't have the guestrooms to put an increased presence of delegates in Sacramento. Since 2019 and prior to the opening of the Marriott AC earlier this year, which is 179 rooms, Sacramento gained three hotel rooms in our central business district. Not three hotels, three hotel rooms. We had a number of hotels close because of the pandemic, and again, the Marriott AC is really the only one who opened. But a 350-room hotel, one that's connected to the Safe Credit Union Convention Center, will change our ability to go after bigger conventions. We can't go after more conventions without bigger rooms. This changes that equation. To be able to tell convention meeting planners that Sacramento has more than 1,300 hotel rooms surrounding the Safe Credit Union Convention Center changes that conversation for us. And I think it's really important to note, in this conversation, you know, we get caught up in the appeal of music festivals and the appeal of sporting events, because they're great things, but the reality is, conventions remain the largest driver of tourism to Sacramento. That's important, especially when you think about the public dollars that were invested in the Safe Credit Union Convention Center. That return on investment only comes with new hotel property. So obviously, it's hugely important to the success of our tourism industry. Again, thank you very much for the time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for all you're doing in this sector. It's tremendous. Let's now hear from members of the public, and then we will turn it over to the city council.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I have 12 speakers. I'll call first Michael Alt on 23, 24, and 25, Delta Mello on 23, Liz Williams on 23 and 25, and then Marbella Sala on 23.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, city manager, Michael Alt with the Downtown Partnership, our city attorney. Hello. It's been a great couple of weeks. You know, when we talk about investment in this community, we look at some of the momentum, I think, that we've collectively seen. Mayor, you've done an incredible job of, I think, leading an agenda that has brought and will continue to bring identity to Sacramento for years to come. You know, the opportunity to see the development in the rail yards of a soccer facility, we've got Major League Soccer coming there, we've got a new hotel being discussed tonight, we've got Kaiser Hospital being built, we've got the Oakland A's coming across the river. This is an opportunity to celebrate. It's an opportunity to celebrate in our community. As we talked on the waterfront last weekend, cities are defined by their rivers, and we have an opportunity to not only invest, but invest in our community. Old Sacramento, we've got about 160 property and business owners in Old Sacramento that I think, over the years, would tell you they've waited for an opportunity to see this type of investment, and I think that they're excited about it. Many of them are lifetime Sacramentoans that have invested in these businesses. The work Mike Testa and his team are doing, pulling all three of these together in my two minutes here, but the work Mike Testa and his team are doing in supporting these festivals, I can tell you, when we have major festivals and events, what it does to the downtown community and our businesses, our restaurants, and our hotels. And finally, the new hotel, Convention Center Hotel, you've got to love Tony Gianoni and his commitment to Sacramento. This is something we believed in, and when this new hotel was built, we said that it would not only drive traffic, but it would drive new opportunities to continue to make Sacramento a destination. We support all three of these items. On behalf of our organization, we're excited about it, and we're excited about the momentum in Sacramento. So thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Delta Mello.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city manager, and city council members. My name is Delta Pick Mello. I'm the executive director and CEO of the Sacramento History Alliance, and I'm here with my board chair, Bob Cicado. The Sacramento History Alliance is the city's partner that manages the Sacramento History Museum, the Old Sacramento Visitor Center, and the underground tours. And we are here to give our unwavering support in the reinvestment into Old Sacramento. This is long overdue, and I'm delighted to know that we're looking at a reinvestment of the already wonderful place that we have. We have this national historic district that is already here, and to put in the resources to improve things like the boardwalks, they are the things that people to improve things like the boardwalks, they are the things that people come to that make them step back into, into time and make the district so important. I'm also very excited about the playground that represents and honors our indigenous heritage as well. I also want to be here to remind you that when you speak of Old Sacramento, to remember that your history museum is in Old Sacramento. While we may be located inside the, the state park, we are part of the city, and I hope you will consider that. This 40-year-old institution is a part of Old Sacramento, needs your support, there is deferred maintenance needed on, on it as well. So I hope it will be considered in the future when you talk about the redevelopment or the, not the redevelopment, but the reinvestment into Old Sacramento. The Sacramento History Museum is your museum, and I hope you'll remember it. Thank you.
Liz Williams, following Liz's, Marbella Sala, and Bobby Moreno.
Good evening, and I would like to, the record to show that we support 23, 24, and 25 as a package. Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, City Council staff. I'm here today on behalf of the Sacramento Metro Chamber, and the member businesses we represent not only in the city of Sacramento, but the entire capital region, because these investments are an investment for entire region, and we know that they're going to have a lasting impact. There has been a number of things said tonight that have amplified the reason why we support this, but instead of saying our own talking points, I'd actually like to amplify some of the wise words from our regional leaders and elected officials, starting with our mayor. Last week, we heard you at a press conference say, "We have many responsibilities and jobs as leaders, whether we are public leaders or private sector leaders in this community, but one of them is to build bigger and more dynamic city. It is to create more for more is good, more culture, more creative, more food, more opportunity for people to have a good time and create memories." This is why we support this. From Michael Alt with the Downtown Sacramento Partnership, "Cities are defined by their rivers, and we have two incredible rivers, and what we are looking to do here is to make not just an investment in the waterfront, but bring people awareness of what a special place this is to us. And although we have been known as the city of trees and the America Farm to Fort Capitol, it is water that gives this community a sense of identity. This is why we support this." From Mike Testa with Visit Sacramento, "The reality is, is that tourism isn't about the tourist, it's about driving economic impact to benefit the people that live here, and that's why we are talking about it today. Again, this is why we support this." And from our Senator Ashby, we would like to amplify her words by saying, "This hotel is really important, not just for the convention center, we have the number one arena in basketball. Why we have not hosted the All-Star Game is because we don't have enough hotel rooms. Every time we build a hotel, it gets us closer to that goal and closer to more experiences for people of Sacramento to enjoy living here. For these reasons and many more, we would like you to support this item, and thank you for your leadership."
Your comments, Marbella Sala.
Back. Good evening, it's been a long day for many of you, and I applaud you for, for hanging in there and waiting for this very important proposition before us, and I, I completely support it and applaud all of you, and Mayor, applaud you. I feel like you're a mayor on steroids. So, but I'm, I'm here just to say, on Gardenland North Gate is one side of the river, on the other side, you have Midtown that's prospering, that's vibrant, that's economic development, that the people can walk, ride their bikes, and have entertainment. On the other side of the river, we cannot walk, we cannot ride our bikes, we don't have entertainment opportunities, and the only way that we can enjoy and have good quality of life is we have to get across to the other side of the river. And right now, it's either 160 or I-5, so you need to think about how you're going to get our community to benefit. And the last point that I really want to make is that on one, you have a disparity between two communities, depending on which side of the river you live. So there's disparity in Gardenland North Gate and disparity in District 2. And I, I think we need to think about how we're going to use the economic vibrancy of what's happening with the railroads and with the waterfront to benefit those communities that have disparity in jobs, disparities economically, disparities education, and lack of ability to benefit from streets for people. So please, when you're doing this, keep us in mind, and we can prosper and, and have a good quality of life as the rest of you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby Moreno, then Alberto Rigaldo.
I don't know if you heard me, I said Rigalotto, but that was close enough. See if I can open this phone up. All right. So hello, Mayor and Council members. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Albert Rigalotto, and I'm a soccer dad, I'm a coach, and I'm the President of Sacramento United Soccer Club with about 1,000 members out in District 6. Our home is Granite Regional Park. I think I've had the pleasure of meeting many of you, and I'm familiar with some of you from that. I've been advocating for our soccer community for over 20 years, and I know that our membership loves projects that revitalize our city, like the waterfront project and this item here. So we support the project, we wanted to come out and show some support, but we asked that the council also consider funding, funding projects for youth facility development that drive tourism into our region. Every October, we host our Boo Fest, which is our largest annual event, which brings in hundreds of teams, thousands of people with their tourism dollars. Imagine what we could do if we had national-level facilities in a place like Granite Regional Park. A quick fact is, a GSEC report ranks greater Sacramento second in the nation for per capita youth soccer participation, with over 100,000 active youth players each year. Because Sacramento facilities aren't on par with other facilities in the country, we often have to travel far to go to top college showcases. But in California, we drive as far as San Diego regularly, and we often have to fly to New Jersey, Tennessee, Arizona, and Florida, to name a few. We ask why not Sacramento? We believe the development of a national-level youth sports facility in Sacramento would bring many benefits to the youth of our region, but most notably, it would increase college opportunities for many under-resourced communities. As it relates to this item, it would bring an enormous economic impact through tourism such as hotel stays and visitors who spend their dollars in our region. In conclusion, we ask that you save some.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Bobby Moreno.
Honorable members of Sacramento City Council, thank you. My name is Bobby Moreno, and today I speak on behalf of the Sacramento United Soccer Club. Today, I want to echo, we are in favor of this project and this initiative that, you know, revitalizes Sacramento. However, today, I want to remind you and emphasize the significance of Granite Regional Park facility upgrades, not just for the Sacramento United Club, but for the entire Sacramento region. This project should be a top priority for the council in the near future as an agenda due to its potential to generate substantial economic benefits through increased tourism and hotel occupancy. By enhancing Granite Regional Park, we position Sacramento as a premier destination for regional and national tournaments and events. These activities will not only attract visitors, but it will help boost local businesses and generate significant TOT dollars. The economic ripple effect from these events will support our local economy and create job opportunities. Investing in this facility is investing in Sacramento's future. It will enhance our city's reputation as a vibrant sports recreational hub, drawing people from across the region and beyond. I urge the council to prioritize these developments for the benefit of the community and its economic viability. Thank you so much.
If your comments, Max Socia, Maggie and Nicholas Baker, then Ryan Henry.
I'm short. Good evening, Mayor.
Evening.
And City Council. I am here in support of the, the investment in Old Sacramento. I am a business owner, and in Old Sacramento, I own or co-owner of Ink and Image, we're specialty printers. And I was going to bring each of you a locally designed Happy Holiday from Old Sacramento ornament that I put together this afternoon, but rather than do that, I decided to invite each of you down to our shop, and when you come in, you receive your free ornament. I haven't seen any of you in Old Sacramento. We need the improvement down there, Old Sacramento is dirty. We need the improvement to the boardwalk, it's unsafe. I am 100% disabled, and I got to tell you, the boardwalk is a big impediment to anybody with a disability shopping in Old Sacramento. The other thing you need to consider when you're redeveloping or reinvesting in Old Sacramento is you can't, once you do it, you can't forget it. It's got to be maintained. We need, we are probably the largest concentration in Sacramento of small businesses, locally-owned businesses. Our profits don't go to Arizona or wherever, out of state or out of country, they stay right here. Our kids go to school here, our grandkids go to school here. We need better support, we need, also need better parking. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Maggie and Nicholas Baker, Ryan Henry, then Kyle Swarrens. After Kyle is Chaz Boswell, Alex Torres.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, City Council, and everyone here tonight, we're thrilled to be able to be here speaking with you all. My name's Maggie, and this is Nicholas, and we own a clothing boutique in Old Sacramento called Thretico, and we are a sustainable boutique. We are right across from the Delta King and from, you know, the, the Rio City and a lot of the places where the propositions of the funding's going, so we have a real vested interest in this. We love having a business in Old Sacramento, we hope to continue to grow our business in Old Sacramento. We do feel, however, that this investment is very needed. We will hear from visitors and tourists that they love the area, but they are kind of sometimes surprised by maybe some lack of updates. We also feel this will help bring more families, especially at nighttime, make it a safer area, and we also cater a lot to locals, so we would love to see more locals kind of come back down as well because they'll see a revitalization and that Old Sac has more to offer them. So thank you very much.
Yeah, and one other thing too, like talking with the local police officers and also being down there, they've all said 8 o'clock, you've got to shut down and be gone. But in a big-time touristy spot, 8 o'clock doesn't mean it stops, right? And you see families down there, and part of this money and renovation and bringing down more events and more tourists means more people, which means more safety, which means more money to be able to have more security and more police officers, which means businesses can stay open more, which means more money going back into the city. All of those things happen, happen concurrently, and so that's why this funding is very important, that you, not just for Old Sac, but for downtown, for Sacramento in general. So thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Next speaker is Ryan Henry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Mr. City Manager. My name is Ryan Henry, I'm the Sacramento City Vice President for Sacramento Area Firefighters Local 522. I've also been a firefighter here in the city for 22 years. I'd like to express our support for not only this waterfront project, but also for the rail yards project that was discussed last week. Investing in economic development projects throughout the city not only improves the experiences and lives of your residents, but also your workforce. We look forward to watching these projects progress and helping in any way we can. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ryan.
Our next speaker is Kyle Swarrens, Chaz Boswell, then Alex Torres, our final speaker.
Good evening, everyone, my name's Kyle Swarrens. I've been a long resident here in Sacramento since I was about six years old, originally moved here to what was called Backden G Parkway, if you can remember that area. It doesn't exist anymore, well, it was rebuilt up. Then I moved to the Pocket Area, where I do have some pretty good memories of actually using my bike to get down to downtown and enjoying it with friends and losing our keys in, in the cracks of the walkways and, and figuring out what we're going to do with our locks, not be able to get unlocked and stuff like that. So I have a lot of good memories down there. Now I'm a father of a three-year-old son who enjoys going down there and enjoying the rail yards and the trains and everything. But I'm here actually tonight because I'm actually a union carpenter. I've been a carpenter for 21 years, right out of high school, I didn't go to college. It was an opportunity for me to be able to give back to my community and grow a family of my own. And tonight, my question's for you, well, this project, some of these projects talked about city properties and some of it being tax credit monies and stuff like that, is the CWA going to be used on this? And if not, is there going to be implementations on these projects that's going to have any type of requirements for the workers? Because at the end of the day, we are part of this community. Like I said, I've been part of this community for 35 years now, and I'm asking you, don't forget about us, don't forget about the workforce that's building these projects. Let's make sure they have healthcare, let's make sure they have livable wages on these projects. Again, we're a part of this community, and we have families too. Thank you.
Thank you. Chaz Boswell. Following Chaz is Alex Torres, who will be our final speaker.
Good evening, distinguished members of City Council and Mayor Steinberg, my name is Chaz Boswell, and I'm here on behalf of Soul Bloom Music Festival. Some of you may remember visiting Soul Bloom in 2023. For those of you less familiar, Soul Bloom is a local, minority-owned, independent music festival that was born here in 2018 by local creatives. With over 23,000 daily attendees in 2020, 2023, we are Sacramento's largest truly independent music festival and the only annual iconic music festival celebrating BIPOC culture. While we had our fair share of challenges in 2024, ultimately, we were forced, forced to postpone due to the flood damage at Discovery Park. Today, I want to thank you for your decision to increase funding for Visit Sacramento's iconic event program. Visit Sacramento is not just a partner, but a critical vessel for distributing these funds and supporting events that drive economic growth, celebrate diversity, and strengthen our city's cultural identity. As the city continues to lead with a race and equity framework in its own policies, I know that you all will ensure the conditions attached with the, along with systems of accountability will be in place to reflect that same lens. Doing so will ensure that events supported truly reflect Sacramento's diversity and commitment to inclusion. I'd like to thank Visit Sacramento, thank you to the Office of Innovation and Economic Development, and thank you all, City Council members in advance for your forward thinking and investment into the local iconic event sector. We're excited to work alongside you all to bring Soul Bloom Black back in 2025, and together, we can ensure Sacramento remains a vibrant hub of culture, equity, and opportunity for all. Thank you.
Your comments, Alex Torres.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Alex Torres here on behalf of the California Capital Venues Coalition, a coalition representing Sacramento's independent brick and mortar music venues, as well as some of our independent promoter friends. And so I want to be supportive, the proposed investment is really critical, I think, and investment in the sector is really important. I think in addition to the thousands of visitor these, these festivals bring to our city and the economic activity, I also want to draw your attention to Exhibit A, the conditions for receipt of these funds that outline what we think are real opportunities for collaboration with our independent venues here in town. In most cases, the indie venues that operate year-round in our city, like Torch Club, Harlow's, and more, see a significant decrease in business during extended festival weekends, but the language, I think, presents some exciting opportunities for partnership and collaboration between the large event promoters and the venues here in town. So we're talking after-parties, concerts after the festival for folks who want to hear a little bit more live music. This results in revenue for our local venues and businesses that have been operating in our communities for a long, long periods of time. And in addition to that additional revenue, gigs for local artists, unique opportunities to showcase our city's unique music culture and identity. So supportive of, of the items, supportive of the conditions attached to it, and we look forward to working with Visit Sacramento, all the stakeholders, to ride the tide of this investment and bring some pretty exciting collaboration opportunities to reality. Thank you.
Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Great. Well, thank you to all the members, the public that came out tonight on one or all three of the items, really important to hear from all of you. Let us turn it over to the City Council for deliberation. Like I said, we're going to cast three separate votes because they're three separate items, but-
but we'll take the discussion all at once. Mayor Protem Talamontes.
Mayor, you want all our comments all at once, right?
Yes. Yes, please.
So I was not at the press conference. Did you change our name to City of Water? Just kidding.
Something like that, yes.
We always have conversations and vibes about what we are.
The city of two rivers.
City of the confluence, okay.
We have been at council since 11:00 AM, so excuse us. We ate lunch in five minutes, so our comments today might be a little scatterbrained. I just want to say that I'm fully supportive of investment in Old Sacramento. We all love it. It's historic. It's a special piece of Sacramento history. Even personally, my grandpa's brother, so my grand uncle, came to America and worked there in Sacramento at the rail yards, as part of his union, helped him get a house. And it's why my dad came to Northern California, because he had an address to go to once getting here from Mexico. And so Old Sacramento is a piece of my family history, and it's a gem, and we need to save it. Some of my district fronts the American River. Other pieces of my district front the Sacramento River. Everyone knows the connectivity and the enjoyment that Parkway provides to many, as well as Sacramento River access along the Marina. We have there, we have crawdads, we have virgin sturgeon, we have the rooster. We have a lot of different restaurants there on the Garden Highway. For me, it's important to recognize, to broaden access to Sacramento River. And I do have a dock, it's called the McClellan Dock, that the city owns. It's a vacant lot that we've had since 2007, and I think that there's a lot of potential. And so as staff, as we move forward with this TOT dollars, my ask is to like just include, you know, consider including that as a potential opportunity for us as a city and a public-private investment. I just feel like this asset shouldn't be neglected, so I'd love to explore that. You know, I went to Virgin Sturgeon on Friday of Aftershock, and there were so many people eating and dining there, very dressed up, and I felt out of place. But it's something that, you know, residents, when they come into Sacramento, they come and they enjoy the restaurants and the hotels and the tomas. And so as we move forward, my direction to the city manager, to our city treasurer, who should be involved in every single conversation that we have about TOT, because he's the expert at it, economic development, and Visit Sacramento, it's important to work together, to create a plan for our next two years, five years, 10 years from now of how we're going to spend these TOT dollars, expect a dollar amount of input, expect a dollar amount to be generated, over what period of time, while also incorporating equity into the conversation, so our forgotten commercial corridors don't get left out from this conversation. So now, City Clerk, can you please play a video, because I have a huge thank you to Visit Sacramento? I want to highlight my district. Visit Sacramento did this beautiful video to get people to come eat, dine, and shop on North Gate.
Hey, y'all. I'm Melissa Mugano. Welcome to Visit Sacramento's Neighborhood Guide. On this installment, we're highlighting North Gate Boulevard.
A lot of people have been coming here since childhood. Everyone knows each other here, so I truly feel part of the community working here at Leslie Video Market.
The community loves us, and we love them. Just tell me that they have a lot of fond memories of them coming with their dads, with their families when they were younger. It makes me feel good that they still come back, and they'll come back with their kids.
That means you're talking about going through generations. That's kind of cool.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, for sure. Yes, for sure.
We wanted to expand our store, so we came to this side of North Gate.
This flavor you can't find anywhere else.
We love our customers. We really do. And we're able to give jobs to families and single mothers and women that don't have experience anywhere else. It's a blessing.
Thank you. Yay. So I just, big thank you to Visit Sacramento, Mike Testa, and your team. I know a lot of people went to that country store to buy their gear for Golden Sky. They have hats and boots and everything you could possibly find. And it was a way to highlight our small businesses and for people to get out of the concert at 11 o'clock and come eat their tacos. So just thank you so much for the investment. You know, these festivals really generate $44.6 million in economics impacts. And as a District Three Councilmember, that Board of Discovery Park is just an honor to be featured, to show our community love, and really just continue this partnership. So thank you and your team for all the incredible work that you've done.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Brigetta.
Thank you, Mayor. Many thanks to all the partners here from all of these three specific different items. I think this is exciting. Obviously, the support for Old Sacramento. I know my kids, they love going to underground mini-golf. They'll go right around the corner and go visit River City Shooting Gallery and put all the coins in and then, you know, hit the pinball machines over at Fanny Ann's Saloon. And after that, I'm hoping they pass out, but no, they just, they want to go to the next exciting thing. Exactly, no, no, exactly. But so it's exciting to see that. And obviously, I mean, I think, you know, many of us have many fond memories at the, you know, at the Delta King, you know, enjoying that amazing deck that they have and talking to folks. And so I appreciate, you know, the fact that we're looking at maintaining that. And it was sad to see what happened to Rio City Cafe. And so, you know, I joke with folks that it's a bummer, because I love their ex-Benedict on the weekends, you know? And but the point here is that we do need to maintain it. I'm very supportive of the $25 million here, but I also think of it's about, you know, what the timing is like on how we use the TOT dollars. Clearly, I think supporting more hotel growth is important, because that's going to drive up the amount of conferences that we have and conventions that we have, so that we're competing with San Jose based on the size that we've invested already. There, I think we had a benefit, the fact that we were, during the pandemic, you know, we were actually building as other people were waiting. So we got a little head start there. Also, very thankful about, you know, the entertainment section and how many people are coming here for all those different concerts. I think finding an avenue for our local artists also to participate has been huge. And definitely history, you know, history itself. So I want to thank Delta personally, because she also did, and they've had a great display for Dia de los Muertos of many of our Latino leaders here, Mayor Joe Serna, also the Royal Chicano Air Force, folks who passed away, and the number of, amount of work that they do in our Old Sacramento to maintain our history. And some people don't know that the building there is a replica of our original City Hall so as well. So I think it's an exciting piece to, while it is on state property, it is our city asset and it is our place of history. And obviously, the homage and the recognition to our, you know, our indigenous families here with the Child's Play Center, the Children's Center is important. But I do want to hit the fact of what I've heard today, both by, you know, folks from North Gate, folks from South Sac, about the need for investment. And it's not lost on me that the last few weeks, all we've heard is, in fact, last month, is heard it's about investments in downtown, investments in downtown, investments in downtown. And so while I strongly believe that our region, not just our city, depends on a strong central city, we need to make sure that we're making those commitments and talking about how we create other economic opportunities for our, for our city that bring in more TOT, that bring in tourism, and not just in our central city. And I think that energy that was spent in downtown for the rail yards, you know, for, you know, the Old Sacramento, even all of the activity improvements that we're doing around K Street Bar, small, need to happen in the rest of our area. And I think the representation by our youth soccer leaders have brought a good point, that youth, that youth sports is a major driver. And to hear regularly from so many parents in my district that they have to, you know, go to San Diego, to fly to Seattle, to fly to Arizona, just, you know, because there isn't anything here for us to compete to bring those tournaments here. That's, that's, that's an issue. Not only does it cost to our families, but we're missing out. We're missing out on that, those hotel dollars and tax dollars. So while I'm very supportive of this, and I want to thank Tony Gianoni, because, you know, without more hotel rooms, we can't also bring in those national-level tournaments as well. Same thing with conventions, we need the amount of hotels here. But, but I will say that I think we need to be prioritizing that. And I mentioned Granite Regional Park, because, you know, this is one of our city assets that has brought in people flying in to go in and play soccer, but it's limited in its capacity. And it's a park, our own park, that doesn't even have bathrooms. You know, it's a park that's, that had faced issues with these sideshows, because it doesn't have good security on the, on the roadways here to control the place. And it's a park that was an interesting mix of public-private partnership to reclaim an old mining pit that, that left Southeast Sac with just this vacant asset. So I think for me, I want to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to not only support our current assets, but looking at our investments throughout our region. And I'll just say one last thing about, you know, why this is also critical, because, you know, we've had so many conversations in the past few years about the shortage of parks where families are fighting over the access to them, and yet we have an opportunity to replenish our TOT, not just use it on maintenance, because clearly, this is, this money is used on maintenance. But, and even asked, don't forget about it, because we're going to have to maintain it again. We need to be thinking about tools and ways for us to invest that are going to replenish that TOT, so we can fund the next project and not just have the money spent one time in its, in its, in its place. So all to say is, I'm excited about supporting this, but I would like to very clearly see, you know, projects that throughout the city that are going to bring in tourism, that are going to bring in this activity, and that are going to support our families as well as much as Old Sacramento has.
I'd like to turn it over to, let me just say, you know, of course, Measure N was about more than just the central city and the waterfront. It campaigned specifically on building a regional youth sports facility in South Sacramento. Now, you know, this measure, TOT is a matter of planning, yes, Mayor Protem, but also a matter of opportunity and timing. And so when Granite Park and/or the 102 acres are ready, you better believe, and I won't be here, but those ought to be the prime sites for a regional youth tourism facility that is for tourists from all over the country, kids from all over the country, and also accessible to our kids in Sacramento. So I just, you know, want to just say that this is, this was never a central-city-centric idea. And of course, you look at all the investment in the commercial corridors and Aggie Square and Stockton Boulevard and Franklin Boulevard Complete Streets and $5 million for North Gate and so much more. We got to continue paying attention to all parts of the city. Agreed. Good. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for helping, working with staff to put together this package of items. It's definitely an exciting time for the central city. And I'm just really thankful, and John, thanks for your very deep review of our TOT revenue and bond capacity. It's just so great to see it doing so well, you know, to hear how well we're doing compared to pre-COVID. And I just want to knit together that story of the decisions that were made when I came onto council and we had ARPA and CARES dollars, and we chose to invest in Visit Sac, we chose to invest in Downtown Partnership, we chose to invest in key services, so that we were taking care of our communities and our neighborhoods, but we were also being very thoughtful about how we, how we helped jumpstart the recovery after COVID. And so to see the revenue doing this well is just really gratifying, because sometimes it takes a couple of years until you can really look back and be like, hey, look, like we, we recovered pretty well. People are coming back, and, and it's just really great to have these resources to be able to spend on exciting projects. I do want to reiterate the call, though, that my colleagues, the Mayor Protem, the council member, I'm sure others will talk about, when it comes to diversifying where this funding goes in the future. You know, as much as I represent the central city, I also recognize that we're strongest when all of our neighborhoods are strong, and that does mean looking to how we create new economic centers outside of just the central city. And so I'm excited about some of the projects that are happening in South Sac, on North Gate, and other parts of the city. And I hope that work continues as we really embrace the inclusive part of economic development. Because as much as the central city has been a big driver of our city's economy, it doesn't always need to be just us. You know, it could also be other parts of the city, and it would be great to see that work continue. To the Old Sac project, this is a great project. I really want to commend staff and all the stakeholders for doing such a good job knitting together the old and the new elements of Old Sacramento. And to Delta's point, the entire history of Old Sacramento, you know, did not start with the gold rush. This is part of what I'm really proud of, when we toured the pictures of the play structures and like all of the work you're doing with the wayfinding signs and the different elements to really tell the entire history of Old Sacramento and to bring in all of these new elements while still honoring the parts of Old Sac that we all love, because the boardwalks are a part of that experience, as cumbersome as they can be if you have people trying to roll or do other things on them. It's, it's part of the experience that we want to treasure and protect. And for Visit Sacramento, just echoing the kudos, I mean, you've been evolving, and I just appreciate the work that you've done to keep your stable base of what you've do well, and then to grow in terms of bringing in the smaller venues, bringing in the other neighborhoods. And I hope, again, to see that work continue, because it would be great to see people really, I mean, so many people come to Sacramento and think that it's just the central city, and when they leave, that it was just this, like, area. And as much as I'm glad that they're coming to Sacramento at all, like, man, there's so much to see when you go north, south, east, west. And I think it's just, the more we can lean in on that, I think the better the experience is going to be, and the more people are going to remember Sacramento for the totality of who we are. And finally, to the carpenter's point, I did want to ask, I saw Michael and Leslie confer over here, and so I just want to confirm what I think I saw you say, Leslie. I'm reading your words all the way over here, is that, does this, do these projects fall under the CWTA for the city?
The projects that are outlined in Old Sac would be, would fall under the CWTA as public improvement projects.
Okay, very good to know. So hopefully that answers the question, because that is very important. I mean, we talk a lot about the jobs we create, but obviously, the quality of those jobs is really important. And so as we move forward with these projects, and as we look forward to the hotel, it's an interesting opportunity, because obviously, like, we all know that parking lot, it's just been like there. It's kind of an experience, something you walk past on your way to other things in downtown. But, you know, we want to make sure that we're not only creating good economic opportunities for tourists, but also for the workers that are building these facilities and working in these facilities. And so I hope when that comes back, it's just odd to, like, make a commitment in advance without knowing what exactly that commitment is. But I also understand this is kind of like another EIFD format, where they're getting back what they generate. But it is just odd. I've never heard you say there's no cap before, I think, like, ever. So I just think that to my colleagues, when this comes back, obviously, weighing out, you know, those cost benefits and making sure we're being judicious with this money, because these are dollars that can also go to many other exciting projects across the city, will be important. But with that, Mr. Mayor, just because I don't think anybody's made a motion yet. Okay.
There are notes, three different.
There's three different items, yeah.
I know, Mayor Protem wanted to make the motion on 24, I think, so I was gonna.
Okay, okay.
Say that for her.
Yeah, I would love to do the motions for the projects in my district, so I will move item 23 and 25.
Second by Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Talamontes, you want to make a?
Yes, I will move item number 23.
Twenty, you're 24. 24, and second by Vice Mayor Maple. So there are motions on the floor for all three, but we still have members that, that want to speak. So Vice Mayor Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. Really appreciate it. And just want to say, this is a really, really exciting, been a really exciting couple weeks.
Yes, it has.
A lot of, a lot of great, great projects underway, and just really want to take this moment to especially thank Mayor Steinberg. Thank you. I know, I know it feels like a lot, especially, you know, in the news and the press conferences, but the reality is, is that this work has been underway for a really long time. Appreciate our staff, our economic development team, our treasurer, all the wonderful staff of Arts and Cultural Services that have been working on these, these efforts. But just want to say that, you know, you've done a lot in your, in your eight years, Mayor, and just appreciate you kind of tying it all in a bow and getting, and moving it forward. These are huge projects that are really going to make, make a difference, not just for us, but for generations to come in Sacramento, for, for young people, for my children, for my children's children. And so I'm excited to see it. I think an investment in Old Sacramento is the right choice. It's one of our, you know, historic resources, and we got to make sure that we take care of it, not just for future generations, but for our small businesses. I will be by to get, to ink an image, to get my ornament. Thank you very much, Max. But, and I also just, you know, just wrapping this all together also with, with music, with arts, I just think it's, it's the right choice. And so I won't belabor this. I know we've got, it's been a long day, and we have a lot of comments ahead of us. Just want to thank the team and you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, very, very much. Councilmember Kaplan.
I kind of want to echo what Vice Mayor Maple said, so taking some of her stuff and adopting it as a me-too. But one of the things I want to look at our city treasurer, as I've heard my colleagues around here, and we're talking about TOT, I think.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, very, very much. Uh, Councilmember Kaplan.
Um, I kind of want to echo what Vice Mayor Maple said, so taking some of her stuff um and adopting it as a me too. But one of the things I want to uh look at our city treasurer, as I've heard my colleagues around here and we're talking about TOT, I think sometime in uh as the new council gets set, we have to think about what is our TOT investment plan? What is the criteria for which we look to invest TOT? And how do we balance what gets funded in return on investment? Because I know each one of us has a request in our district that we believe will bring in tourism. And so instead of us all fighting, I think we need to look at what is potentially good as objective criteria of what is the balance, because this really is about tourism, not just um what we want in our district. And I get to thank Senator Ashby for her uh forethought because it's been Natomas who's been adding all the hotels, and we have another one opening, and I have three more proposed in Natomas. So when you talk about underinvestment, Natomas has been investing and is waiting for uh and has already have the hotel rooms for the investment for tourism. So Old Sacramento and our our waterfront investment, I first was exposed, I moved to Sacramento in 1997. McGeorge School of Law likes to do something called the bar review. I was naive about my first three weeks in because I thought we were getting together to study the bar, because that's what you do when you go to law school. Little did I know that on the uh black chalkboard, uh, they were writing down names of different bars that we were supposed to visit. And one of the first bars I visited, uh, newly arrived here in Sacramento was Fanny Ann's. Um, and so uh Old Sacramento uh kind of entrapped me uh many years as a young law student. And then um uh Delta, Old Sacramento and the History Museum uh hooked me uh hook, line and sinker because my husband, for our second date, took me on the uh Old Sacramento Underground Tour. And I cannot believe if you have lived in Sacramento, you have not gone in the Old uh Old Sacramento Underground Tour. It is an amazing story of our history um that I am very much, you know, tied to. And then having kids, spending a lot of time at the Train Museum and the Sacramento Museum uh and wandering around the boardwalk, uh, walking with a toddler on the boardwalk is 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 a feat in itself because, you know, trying to keep your kids upright and not falling over from the uh numerous hours we have spent in Evangeline's because that's every kid's candy store um to uh Sacramento Suites, which, by the way, um, Maggie, I don't know if you recognize me, I was in your shop last week. Um, you have a very cool shop, uh, I look forward to go back when I have time and I'm not on the phone while I am trying to shop. Um, and my kids appreciated next door, taking chocolates home from Sacramento Suites. Um, it is a wealth of win. You say, Max, it is all of a majority of our small businesses in a small area. It is. And um I cannot believe it's been since the sixties we've really invested in Old Sacramento and our waterfront. And the time is now. We have the Sacramento As coming in. That's 81 more games over in West SAC that we in Sacramento need to partner with West SAC to capitalize on the economic investment. And by investing this money in the waterfront, that the time is now. And I agree, Mayor, this is just phase one, because I know Senator Ashby brought in several million dollars uh with the state parks, and they're also looking at a hotel in Old Sacramento that we need to get moving on because the time is now to truly invest because this is a treasure and we do need to um keep it up. So thank you for your leadership and pushing on that. As you know, it's been of of interest to me. For our budget and Visit Sacramento for iconic event support and production, one of the things that I think is really important, many people talk about Golden Sky and Aftershock, but I'd like to not forget about Soulbloom, and I'd like to expand on our independent to make sure that the money goes towards not just our two biggest, but how can we help everybody succeed and that we expand on what Alex said of after the event, go to the Torch Club. How do we work with our local music venues, which are such a uh a treasure to have that we've all been to numerous times, to help make sure they benefit on that? Because thank you, uh, what you have done with Northgate and other areas of where can people eat to also reinvest uh in our community? Because I want to make it easy, when we're doing this, where do you go? If somebody is coming in to watch the As, what can they visit in Old Sacramento? What can they visit in Doco? What can they do to go to Northgate or, you know, um, some of our iconic, really good, you know, Chinese food or dumplings? Where can they get some of the best restaurants and have those experiences? So I do want to make sure that we are supporting our local vendors, artists and small businesses as we look at this $2 million for um for investment. And um I know that we are saying, Tony, we believe in the convention hotel. It needs to become a reality, whether it's the city helping you invest or the market ends up in a way that you can do it without us. I want to state that commitment, you know, and it's important to me that the investors know because I know how the market works and I know what they're looking for because we've got to get this hotel built sooner rather than later uh with everything that Visit Sacramento um has on the books. So thank you uh for everything that everyone has done. This is an investment into our families and into tourism and to making the city of Sacramento the vision we know it can be.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember Tao, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, not gonna take so long, but I wanted to echo the comments of of my member, I'm excited. It's been a long day today, you know? Wanted to uh thank the mayor, the city staff, uh, Visit Sacramento, and I'm excited to vote on this three items tonight. Uh, definitely the old uh Old City SAC waterfront, that's something that, you know, growing up with refugee fam, uh, from refugee family, that was something that my parents could only afford to take us to and to visit in Sacramento. We didn't go to King's Game, we didn't go to anything. All we did was just go to the old waterfront, and the old waterfront remained the same. And I'm so excited that, you know, we're able to vote for this investment tonight for that as well. And I, my hope is that, you know, with with the economic investment and uh of the central city and the growth, we will see this uh go, and I hope city staff will focus on my district as well, Del Paso Boulevard, as it's an entertainment, it's also an entertainment district, you know? With Golden Sky and the success, we we saw an enormous amount of people go to Stony Inn, that's the number one country bar in Sacramento. And, you know, I I would love to see how we can promote more nightlife entertainment on Del Paso Boulevard as we develop the central city with the rail yards and and uh the waterfront and as well as, you know, the the Convention Center Hotel. I think these are much needed to thrive as a city, and uh my my support is that, you know, uh, I think it's needed and it's time, and I'm happy to support these items.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you so much. Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor, I'm gonna start with, I'm not gonna be long-winded as well. Um, I will do my best to be uh to talk fast because I do talk fast. So thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, in the last few weeks, you've you've definitely landed the plane on several projects that you've been working on for the past several years, from the rail yards um and to the waterfront, and it sounds like you're gonna get all your votes uh unanimously. Um, and so congratulations to you for um your great work, your leadership, leaving your mark and your legacy uh here in Sacramento. Uh, for me, I, you know, very, very easy yes on all of these items, especially around the waterfront, uh, which is long overdue, very similar to Councilmember Tao. Uh, we couldn't afford summer vacations for my family, my parents couldn't do that. So uh summer vacations for us was always our local parks and Old Sacramento. And so uh we are definitely a long overdue for that, so definitely support um TOT dollars being used for that and supporting Sacramento, Visit Sacramento's iconic events, our various music festival, um, that, um, you know, it's really shaping uh Sacramento, too. I think folks come here because they know of the concerts, and I love live music, and I'm so proud to to support that as well. Um, the only thing I want to share, and I think uh we've we've heard it from several council members, um, is not forgetting our underserved communities. I know several speakers said earlier that our city is defined by our river. Yes, this is true, um, but our city is also defined on how we bring our communities along, especially those that have been underserved. And I've always believed that a city can only be great when we leave no neighborhoods and no families behind. Um, as you heard earlier from the city treasurer, you know, when we first began the conversation on changing our city charter, uh, which is Measure N, the intent of Measure N was really to ensure that we actually have the flexibility for the waterfront and to ensure that we can invest in economic engines outside of the city core. So I want to just reaffirm that again, I think that's really important to say on the record, um, to support uh neighborhoods like South Natomas and Del Paso and South Sacramento. Something, uh, really appreciate Councilmember Gera bringing the youth sports. I think something I want to share is that during the pandemic, the only thing that was really consistent in revenue was youth sports. I mean, parents, right? Uh, sports is something that's consistent, that can bring revenue into the city. And so I I support all of these items, um, but I also like to just echo on record, and and maybe this is a direction to Mayor, you know, I support uh Mayor Pro Tem, Telemontes, and even Councilwoman Kaplan on on us figuring out as a city, and maybe this is for the next mayor and council, um, to have a a conversation around a strategic approach around the TOT dollars. I think that's really important. Yes, timing is part of it, is it ready to go? Um, but how we use the TOT dollar, um, and ensuring that we are investing in economic engines in underserved community should be a critical part of that. And so I'm happy to vote yesterday, but hope that we can add that direction to city staff because I do think that it's a larger conversation that that must be had uh for this mayor and council as well, so.
I think that's great on all three, you know, on the waterfront motion, you want to make or the waterfront motion, add that as uh as the intent, that's absolutely fine with this, with the second or agreeing to all that. Okay, good. Eric, go ahead.
Oh, very, very short. I I just couldn't take the, miss this opportunity to thank a a local Granite Park soccer mom who's also does the underground tours. Thank you, Jessa, if you're watching, for how all those amazing tours and making all those kids enjoy that and, uh, you know, great job.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, very brief in closing, I want a couple of additional thank yous. You know, Ellen and Economic Development, you've really done a great job. Thank you. I also want to thank Richard Rich, who, uh, you know, preceded you and really uh helped me and us get started on this vision for waterfront. I want to thank Mary Lynn Velenga, too, my chief of staff, who uh who, you know, worked so hard along with Scott White here to make sure that uh we were focused in my last year and could land these planes. And finally, I want to say a a special thank you to my, all my colleagues and to Howard because Howard really committed these last couple of months to helping me and us land these planes. Um, and to make sure that we got all this done, not just because I'm leaving, but, well, in part, because uh a a little bit, that we wanted to get this done and create some really real momentum for uh the next mayor and the next city council. And, you know, all of the comments about we should be doing more and more in the communities and neighborhoods, absolutely. My message to all of you is twofold. Number one, I would say at the first of the year, be up to the new mayor and all of you, you ought to make this a major topic of a workshop and and begin talking about different ideas and priorities for the use of this fund. And and take it to the next level, take it to the next level. Over $100 million of money that is out there for economic development in this city around tourism, not just for people living out of the city, as Mike Tessa said, but for the people of Sacramento. And just be assertive in putting forward your ideas. But as we found out from these projects over the last couple of weeks, it takes a long time to get get it all together so we can get to these kinds of nights, but there's so much more to do out there. This is just the beginning. I thank you all for your support. Let's um call the, call the roll on item 23, please. All in, let's just say all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain, that's unanimous. Item 24. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Oh, my. Uh, item 25, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Unanimous across the board, everybody. Wow. Okay. It's a long day. Is there public testimony on items not on the agenda? We do have one speaker.
I have one speaker, Kyle Williams, for matters not on the agenda.
And then we do have an important adjourned memory, so I would ask everybody to please be patient. And council, and lengthy council comments.
Was I supposed to come up or is that just?
Yeah, um, I know, I know that, uh, hold on a sec, Kyle.
They don't have to stop.
No, it's okay, we can take all the uh, all the, all the happiness outside the chambers, Let's go, go ahead, Kyle, you're good.
I just wanted to say goodbye, I was gonna come down and speak this month, and then I thought this is probably the last time I'll see you. And so I just wanted to say, do you remember when I stuck my hands out and asked you to pull a finger? My left finger was a far-left lefty and a far-right righty, it was the first meeting I saw you in. Do you remember which finger you pulled?
Um, well, vaguely.
You pulled right over here, you said you just left the center. I said that's about right. So anyway, I just want to say it's been fun and uh you, uh, all of you contribute a lot by, you know, I'd I'd like to see more independents and Republicans serving, but you folks are serving, so I can't bash you for that because I'd like to see a diversity of thought. So maybe you could help us uh figure that out, Mayor, as you're, as you fade away, how to, how to get more diversity in this town. All I have, it seems is
Not fading away, by the way, but okay.
You what?
I'm not fading, I'm just
Well, aren't you, okay, last month, got a minute left, what was I gonna say? It was one other thing. Oh, your education comment, love that. And after subbing for three and a half years, 20 years ago, I came to your office and and when you were up there in the the third most powerful room there, and your people sent me across the street to talk to the lady in charge of education. It took me seven phone calls, being the bulldog that I am, and two whatever else is to get in front of her. And when I got in front of her, do you know what she said? Get out of my office, I really don't care. One person can't make a difference. I don't say that because I'm not with you, I'm with you 100%. But it doesn't seem like they put much effort into that old thing called education. Just food for thought, has nothing to do with you, but since you, since you brought that up earlier. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kyle, thank you so much.
Been a pleasure watching you.
Thank you.
I have no more comments, Mayor.
All right. Um, we do have really actually a very solemn and important adjourned memory, but we do have some council comments here, uh, on items not on the agenda, and I'd ask everyone to consider being brief, but that's of course up to you, Councilmember Valenzuela.
I was speculating, it only does this when I have announcements because I never do.
Sorry.
It's okay, it's fine. Um, so we're getting ready to start our final toy drive for the um kids over at Marina Vista Alder Grove. This is our largest public housing complex, colleagues, in the city. There's over 800 kids under the age of 18 at this um complex, and we try to make sure that every single one of them gets something. So if you have extra toys or if you hear of a business doing a toy drive and has some extra things, please consider throwing them our way so we can make that a big success again. And then um for the city manager, I was looking at the preliminary agenda for December 3rd, and it looks like violence prevention is not planning to be discussed. Is it possible to add that since that will be our last full council meeting?
You know, we have a pretty uh full agenda. I'll work with the uh the mayor on this because we we look at this every week along with all the preliminary items, and that could be something we're gonna bring, we could bring forward, but we are planning on bringing forward an update on homelessness and an update from PD as well, so we thought we'd take those together. I don't know if it's gonna make it to December 3rd.
So we'll talk about it.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I know I've been asking since the shooting in July, and there's been several other shootings in my district since then, so would love to get that before we leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tao.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to uh some public events, um, our Dixie Anne Neighborhood Clean Up and, not clean up, Dixie Anne Neighborhood Clean and Green Alley's project will be unveiling this Saturday, November 23rd. Five alleys repaved with arts in their community, and a big shout out to Sparky Harris with Public Works Department for giving this $5 million grant. Uh, we're finally finished the project and doing the unveiling. Uh, other events at my district is Grant High School Mong New Year, hosted by the students at Grant High School, which is tomorrow night at 5:00 PM. And since we don't have council next week, I am uh announcing the uh Sacramento Mong New Year at Cal Expo starts Friday, the 29th, and goes until the 31st. And then, uh, Mayor, you will be joining us within the parade and opening, correct?
On Friday.
Yes, and then uh Yeah, we could dress up the mayor, definitely. Actually gifted the mayor a Mong outfit a long time ago, I don't know
I have it.
Yeah, yeah. Fun fact is the Mong New Year has been hosted in Sacramento since 1982, and that's 42 years that the Mong community has hosted uh Mong New Year and at Cal Expo, too. And so that And so that's a lot of revenue generated for the city as well. And so that's something just to be excited about because we attract about 40,000 people all around California that comes to Sacramento.
Cannot wait. Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Jennings.
All right, very quickly, the Thanksgiving Week Soccer Camp is live and getting ready to come on the 25th, 26th and 27th. It's the Third Annual Thanksgiving Week Soccer Camp. And it's going to take place from 9:00 to 11:00 each day. So in preparation for all the turkey you're going to eat, you want to make sure that your kids age six through 13 come to the soccer camp. For more information, contact the Greenhaven Soccer Club webpage or you can contact my office to hear more about it. And then I hear that Santa Claus is coming to District 7. And we encourage you to come meet Santa Claus or bring your kids to come meet Santa Claus. It's going to take place on December the 5th. That's Thursday, December the 5th, at the William Land Park Golf Course from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. There will be holiday surprises, photo booth, glow up pudding greens, games and free hot cocoa, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But Santa will be there, so opportunity. Last thing is the Holiday Toy Drive. This is the, in conjunction with Assembly Member Stephanie Nguyen, the Greenhaven Soccer Club is hosting the Eighth Annual Holiday Toy Drive. It's benefiting outside the walls and it'll take place on Saturday, December the 14th from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. They're accepting new and unwrapped toys for children 1 through 13. It's at the School of Engineering and Science. And so come on out to make sure you benefit others during this Christmas time. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. Follow along if you live in North Natomas and Robles. Santa in D1 is coming two days, the first week of December and two days the second week of December. And the last park we're at is always a big party if you don't want to join in, except for the last park. I also want to say that my oldest, who is Mai's birthday, birthday twin, very much looks forward to celebrating and being there for Mong New Year. So you should see us there at the Friday parade. Because Viva will not let, like, I will lose my status as, as a good mother.
Are you guys coming over to dress up?
Well, we should. That'd be year three. That'd be year three. So want to, want to confirm that. But also I want to give a shout out because this Sunday, our colleague Mai Vang is officially tying the knot and I think publicly want to wish her well and remind her to breathe and enjoy her special day.
Absolutely. It's a wonderful, wonderful thing. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Also wanted to wish our, our friend and colleague here, Mai Vang, a very special day. Yes, a Mongsican wedding, you know? Looking for the pork, you know? But in all seriousness, for Mayor, friends and folks who can donate, our Title I school that has a lot of needy families, Mark Twain Elementary, is in very desperate need of clothing supplies for their Slide Park winter trip. And, and so we need those supplies by December 2nd. So if anyone can help with sleeping bags, hiking shoes for, for sizes six and nine, men's with sizes five and nine, and jackets for kids size, kids extra large to adult large. Those are very needed for those so that they can actually go to the science camp. But because of the weather, we really need to help those. And those expenses, expenses while transportation gets covered could be a prohibitive way for these young kids at Mark Twain Elementary to be able to enjoy a great opportunity. So if you can help out, drop it off at the, at the office at Mark Twain Elementary on 58th Street. And if you, or if you have questions, feel free to call our office and we're glad to help and coordinate.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Councilman Geta. So we end tonight on a very, very sad note. And I wanted to turn it over to our city clerk, if she's able, to be able to speak about a major loss in our city family.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll do my best.
We got you.
It is. So it's with great sadness that I ask the city council to adjourn in the memory of Carolina James. So Carolina joined the Sacramento City Clerk's office in 2015 and she left us this past Thursday. So she was bright, bubbly and dedicated to our city. She was a positive influence to everyone she crossed paths with. I speak on behalf of the entire city clerk's office and all that knew and loved her. She will be greatly missed. So thank you, Mayor and council. Carol's family and her office appreciates your adjourned memory of this amazing soul, Carolina James.
In Carol's memory, our deepest condolences to her and her family and to you and your team, okay? We're all with you, okay? We are adjourned.